Evening, I'm Chief Kenlock. I'm a Springfield native. Attended Central High School and Drury University. I'm in IT in the submarine force, currently serving out of Banger, Washington.
Wow.
Good evening. My name is Lieutenant David Harbysuke. I am the Director of the Navy Band Great Lakes. We are stationed in Great Lakes, Illinois, and Missouri is one of the states in our area of responsibility. We are very much looking forward to performances all week long culminating on Friday evening on the waterfront. Thank you so much for hosting us. Very glad to be here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Lieutenant Commander Chris Kirkpatrick, Springfield, Missouri native. Went to high school in Hillcrest High School. Left there and joined the Navy in 2001. I'm currently stationed at Navy Information Operations Command in San Antonio, Texas. Recently moved there from Pearl Harbor, Hawaii, at 24 years now.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chief Brandon Gostado. I am from the Missouri side of Kansas City, just north of here. Went to Winnetonka High School. I'm currently serving as Liaison Officer for Advanced Robotics.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chief Petty Officer Hamm, currently serving in ATG Norfolk as a Ballistic Missile Defense Trainer and Certifier. Born and raised Butler, Missouri, and looking forward to retirement next year and hopefully rejoining you guys here back in this great area.
Howdy, everyone, and good evening. My name is Petty Officer First Class Lisa McDonald. I'm from the Joplin area. Glad to be here as well. I'm currently stationed along with Lieutenant Commander Kirkpatrick over at the Informations Command in San Antonio. Went to school in Missouri Southern, so, and graduated from over there, and just glad to be back in the area. Thanks for having us.
Good evening. I'm Senior Chief Brown. I was born in Springfield and raised in Forsyth, where I graduated from Forsyth High in 2007. Been in the Navy for about 18 years, currently stationed on the USS Cole as the Combat Systems Maintenance Manager. Thank you for giving me a reason to come home.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a 1-1 Sean Rutz. I'm from Mount Grove, Missouri. I graduated from Mount Grove, born in Springfield, and I'm currently onboard USS Cole where I'm serving as Ship Secretary.
I'm Lieutenant JG Samantha Perrett. I lived in Joplin, Missouri for four years, and I'm currently at Navy Public Affairs Support Element East, and Captain Self Kyler is my CO.
Thank you, guys, gentlemen, ladies, thank you. One more time for the Navy men and women here. Is it time for public comment? Okay. Public comment section of the Board of Aldermen meeting. At this time, the Board will be, will hear from the citizens who have signed up in the order they are listed. Please note, the clerk will let speakers know when they have 30 seconds left and a notification sound when their time is up. We ask that speakers wrap up their comments upon hearing the 30-second warning. If a speaker would like a board member to bring an item from the consent agenda down for additional discussion, please note this request during comments. Please come to the freestanding mic right here in front of us to address the Board. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. We have six speakers. Our first speaker is Rob Tiora, speaking on Gold Star Moment.
Thank you. I'll be speaking on Gold Star Memorial. Good evening, Aldermen. I'm here on behalf of the Shepherd of the Hills Garden Club to talk about the invite that you have received for the Gold Star Memorial dedication on October the 8th. At Branson's Memorial Veteran Garden. The invites have been given to the city, and they are in your in-basket. The Gold Star Monument. Shepherd of the Hills Garden Club is proud to host the dedication ceremony in honor of the installation of the Gold Star Monument. A timeless tribute to the families of those courageous individuals who have made the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our freedom. About the monument. The Gold Star Monument stands as a symbol of gratitude and remembrance of the dedication, not only of the fallen, but also the families whose lives have been forever changed by their service and their sacrifice. It's a place of reflection, unity, and healing, a physical testament of the enduring strength and the resilience of the Gold Star families. The significance of the event. Through this ceremony, the Shepherd of the Hills Garden Club reaffirms the commitment to honoring veterans and their families by bringing together the community members, veterans, and Gold Star families. The event fosters a sense of solidarity and a deep appreciation for those who have given so much for our country. Together, we pay homage to the strength, courage, and enduring legacy of those who have protected our freedom, and to the families of those who continue to inspire with their resilience. Many of the veterans groups in our regions who support vets, along with Gold Star families in addition to dignitaries, along with the public, are invited. The dignitaries include Brian Sykes, who sits on the Veterans and Armed Forces Committee with years of support for our veterans. We thank Brian much. He's been here several times supporting veterans. Our state representative, U.S. Congress Representatives, both Senators Josh Hawley and Eric Smith, and Governor Kehoe, many of who are personal friends with Robert Wake, the founder of and the Executive Director of the Wake Foundation, who is a keynote speaker at the event. Robert Wake is a twice-decorated Purple Heart veteran. He established the Wake Foundation 15 years ago. The Wake Foundation is highly regarded nationally. Robert Wake has been on the stage in Washington with four U.S. Presidents. He has a high regard for veterans, their needs, and he especially appreciates what Branson has done for veterans, and has such as wanted a Wake Foundation chapter located here for quite some time. I'm pleased to say that the Wake Foundation Southwest Missouri Chapter will be serving this region from Joplin down to Arkansas border with a special emphasis on Branson. I'll be serving as the Director of this chapter. Several upcoming events will be hosted here in Branson. The Gold Star Monument placement in Branson is significant. It further reflects our community's longstanding historical commitment to veterans. I know that we'll be honored this week, first Navy Week, and second, the first time for the Blue Star, for the Blue Angels coming here this weekend. A significant honor. I've also heard discussion that the city of Branson is being designated potentially as our nation's city, being honored as the Veterans' City of the Nation. I hope that comes to pass. This reflects your continued and ongoing effort of the cities. We hope you all can attend on October the 8th for that dedication ceremony. If anyone wants an information sheet, there's a, I think there's a pretty lady in the back with these. My wife should be happy to give you one. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rob. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Carrie Brown, speaking on Bible Encounter.
My name is Carrie Brown. I'm the Executive Director of Images at the Cross, the large blue teardrop cross on the north side of the city. When I heard that as a part of the, as I understand it, the part tonight talking about the TIFF and the region that it's in, there is a Bible Experience Museum, Bible Encounter Museum that's going in there, and I thought it was fantastic from the standpoint of, we do have a lot of ministries that are nonprofits that are doing the work here in the community, and they do a fantastic job, but I think having a Bible Encounter that brings so much to the community, particularly centrally located in the Branson area, is something that's well worth TIFF funds going to help support. And the fact that it's for-profit, I think also plays directly into the entertainment background of the Branson community, and would be, they would be doing the work of the ministry, but also supporting the Branson as it transitions going forward. And so, I just wanted to come and give my full-throated support to them. I think that what they're doing is of God, and, well, actually, I don't think. I know what they're doing is of God, and I believe that it would be a blessing, and any support that the Aldermen and the city of Branson can give them, I think would be well worth their effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carrie. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Matt Atkins, speaking on Branson Meadows Project.
Hi. My name is Matt Atkins. I'm the Executive Director of the Tany County Partnership. Our offices are located at 4100 Gretna Road in Branson. So today, I'm here voicing full support for the proposed Branson Meadows TIFF Project. This initiative represents far more than just a simple development plan. It is a forward-looking investment in Branson's long-term economic strength and continued investment of our destination. The future of the economy is fun, not just locally but globally, and the numbers reflect that. It's being driven by the various sectors that Branson is already celebrated for: tourism, entertainment, and now sports. This project builds on those strengths and positions our community to stay ahead of national trends rather than simply play catch-up. One of the most exciting elements of the plan is the potential to drive visitation during Branson's slower season, so we're getting closer to that year-round economy, by hosting year-round youth and amateur sporting events. Branson is perfectly positioned to tap into a market that brings not only volume but lasting economic impact. This is a win not just for sports, but for all local businesses: hotels, restaurants, shops, and attractions that benefit from a diversified extended tourism season. This ripple effect of this investment will positively be felt across the entire community. The ball is literally in our court. We have an opportunity to make strategic investments that ensure Branson's continued growth as a premier destination for fun, family, and community. I urge you to support this project and to help lead Branson, continue, lead Branson, into a future built on vision, momentum, and smart investment. Thank you for your leadership and continued support of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Madam Clerk, next speaker?
Our next speaker is Bill Skane, speaking on General.
We got that confirmed.
I called you, and I called you, just to see how you're doing. And I called you to see how you're doing. Is the mayor still on?
Mayor's on.
Right. Larry, I came down to wish you swift recovery. I've texted back and forth with you. We miss you, and you and I butted heads a whole lot less time than we've agreed on things, and we need you back in the chair, because Clay's doing all right. He's doing all right.
I don't want it, so come on.
Come on back.
Coming back.
I came down here in support of the Branson Downtown Merchants Association in moving forward with their community improvement district activities. We had given the nod previously as our board, and I served on four to five years, and I would push you all and admonish the group to make as few changes as possible. I mean, it's not broken. We know that there's some things that have to be fixed, but to continue to support that, these people are doing real good, and my sister-in-law Mary, that serves on the board, did not pay me to do any of this. I'm doing it on my own accord, but the locks of love will be ready for you, Ralph, here this in the next few days. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Bill.
Madam Clerk, next speaker?
Our next speaker is Gary Gromen, speaking on It's the Process, sir.
I know there's an agenda item further on for the CID, but this is not about the CID. It's about the process of putting the CID on the agenda this evening. At the outset, I would say that I, like many people, support our historic downtown district, but it's one thing to support projects such as a major project like the $11 million-plus streetscape, and entirely another to provide city services above and beyond those provided to similar businesses in the city without reimbursement and disrespecting the normal legislative process. While doing my due diligence for a news article, I came across two recent letters relating to the negotiation process between the city and CID. One is the July 25, 2025, letter from City Administrator Kathy Stepp to Kyle, I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Junk, the Vice Chair of the CID. The other is his August 4, 25 response to her letter. In her letter, Administrator Stepp said, quote, "The city is amenable to following, to the following proposal which will accomplish most, if not all, and more than what you requested," end quote. The letter explained the proposal and, quote, "A one-year extension of the CID as is and without exception in order to allow time for the city and CID to facilitate the amendment of the petition of the CID," end quote. Administrator Stepp also said, "I respectfully request the opportunity to meet with you and your fellow CID board members to discuss this proposal and to further highlight the expanded opportunities this pathway could provide to benefit the downtown district," end quote. In his August 4 response letter, Junk refused that invitation and saying, "Because of the urgency of this ma," quote, "Because of the urgency of this matter, the fact that the CID submitted a proposal to the city over six weeks ago that already addresses all the specific requests in your letter, and since the CID board already met with the city staff on April 2nd, we must respectfully decline the request for meeting between you and the CID board. We simply need to know whether the Board of Aldermen will vote to extend the CID term." I subsequently found out that Administrator Stepp and the staff were simply doing what the Board asked them to do during an executive session meeting, yet here we are tonight because two Aldermen interfered in the middle of the negotiating process to thwart the issue on the agenda tonight before the process was complete. It's one thing when two Aldermen submitted an agenda on a topic that the Board has not discussed or requested the staff to act on. It's entirely another thing when they interfere with and undermine staff as it's endeavoring to do that which the Board directed them to do. It establishes a horrible precedent, one that I pray you will take steps to eliminate in the future and not honor or encourage tonight. Any questions?
Thank you, Gary.
Mr. Vice President, I just have one question.
I don't know. I like the title, whatever it is.
I love it. Undermine. What do you mean by that?
Do something that causes a problem with the staff that's trying to negotiate. That would undermine it. If you did something that gave the other side pause to think that they're gonna, something's gonna be different, and they didn't have to negotiate, I call that undermining. Now, you can call it what you want, but...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Madam Clerk, is this our final speaker?
It is our final speaker, Lori Hayes, speaking on the TIFF Plan.
Kind of difficult to follow both Bill and Gary, but here we are, and I am last. So, I do want to thank you guys. I had a good meeting with a couple of you. Unfortunately, was unable to connect with some others concerning the TIFF Plan at Branson Meadows. While the TIFF Commission meeting did address several of the concerns of the Branson Area Lodging Association, we still have a couple that we hope you'll do your due diligence. We have concerns about the fact that we're offering tax incentive financing to businesses that will be in direct competition with existing tax-producing businesses, the hotels, the restaurants, the retail space. We have a lot of those already in Branson. The second concern is the appraisal price of the city project land. I did provide you guys with several comparables, and the comparables that we came up with had that land valued at a half a million to five million, not the 6.6 million that the city is projecting to purchase. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. That's it, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that any member of the Board or staff would like to have moved down from the consent agenda to ask additional questions or comments? Here are none. Madam Clerk, would you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Your Honor, the items on the consent agenda are as follows: Approval of the Board of Aldermen Minutes for the August 12, 2025, Special Meeting and August 12, 2025, Regular Meeting; Acknowledgement of Disbursements for July 16, 2025 through August 4, 2025; Final Reading of Bill Number 6573; An Ordinance Approving the Agreement with the Branson Lakes Area Chamber of Commerce and Convention and Visitors Bureau Incorporated for the Use of Tourism Tax Contingency Funds; And Authorizing the Mayor to Execute the Contract; Final Reading of Bill Number 6574; An Ordinance Establishing the Annual Levy of a Property Tax for General Revenue in the City of Branson, Missouri, a City of the Fourth Class; Final Reading of Bill Number 6575; An Ordinance Approving Participation by the City of Branson, Missouri in a New National Opioid Settlement with Purdue Pharma LP; And Authorizing the Mayor to Execute the Documents Related There To; Final Reading of Bill Number 6576; An Ordinance Amending Chapter 6 and Chapter 22 of the Branson Municipal Code pertaining to References to Finance Director; And Amending to Be Planning and Development Director; And Final Reading of Bill Number 6580; An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Surface Transportation Block Grant STBG Program Agreement pertaining to West 76 Country Boulevard, Segments 1 and 2 for Shepherd of the Hills Expressway to Glory Road in Branson, Missouri. Your Honor, that concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
All right, do I have a motion approving all items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a second. Madam Clerk, will you now provide a roll call vote?
Lucas?
Yes.
Howden? Okay. Cooper?
Yes.
Denham?
Yes.
LeBlanc?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
The result of the vote is 5-0. Motion carries. Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 6581, an ordinance approving the amended Gretna Road and Town and Country Drive Tax Increment Financing Plan designating a redevelopment area, declaring the proposed redevelopment area a blighted area, and designating Branson Meadows TIFF Co. LLC in the City of Branson, or the cities designated as the developers of the redevelopment projects.
All right, you've heard the first reading of Bill Number 6581. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second, and we'll have a presentation from the city's consultants on this matter, Laber Municipal Law and Baker Tilly.
Hi, good evening.
There she is.
Lindsay Colish.
I usually only see you on a Zoom call.
Nope, you got me in person today.
You look good.
And you'll be sick of me in a few minutes.
Yeah, I like it.
I promise. So, as you know, I'm Lindsay Colish. We, Laber Municipal Law, serve as Special Economic Development Council for the city. We represent the city, not the developer, and you know that we are here tonight to discuss the amended Gretna Road and Town and Country Drive TIFF Plan, and the related ordinances, seven ordinances we have in front of you tonight. So before we begin, I'm just going to give a brief summary of what we'll see. You do have seven items, like we mentioned, on the agenda. If approved, what these ordinances would do would approve the TIFF Plan, approve the TIFF contract, which implements the TIFF Plan. It would approve the Chapter 100 Plan, approve and establish a community improvement district, and then also authorize the execution of a cooperative agreement that governs that CID. And then the same thing for a transportation development district. We would file a petition for a transportation development district, and then also approve a cooperative agreement for the TDD. So first, we'll take each ordinance in turn, and we'll kind of be talking about them all together, but if there's questions, you know, anytime. First, you'll hear from me, and then also from Baker Tilly on their financial information. Then we will have an opportunity for the applicant to speak, and then we will go on to the next ordinance. So we will start with the TIFF Plan. So between the plan, the staff report, you have the TIFF Commission. We've all heard a lot about this project, but I want to start with just a few preliminary... When I hit this, it vibrates? There we go. Okay, okay. That's fine. Okay, so this development is the Gretna Road and Town and Country Drive Tax Increment Financing Plan. The applicant is Branson Meadows TIFF Co. LLC. The redevelopment area is 136 acres through Town and Country Drive and Gretna Road. This map is actually turned to the west, so you can see Gretna Road here in the middle there, going, going... So in, within this redevelopment area, we have three redevelopment project areas. Two of them would be developed by the developer, and then the third would be developed by the city. For the developer project areas, Redevelopment Project Area 1 has 150 residential units, a sports entertainment facility, a historical tourist attraction, and a 200-room hotel. We would anticipate that construction would commence in 2027 and would be complete in Project Area 2 includes 110 residential units, which is a little bit of a change that I will discuss in just a moment. It also includes 31 rental cabins, two restaurants, a convenience store, a sporting goods store, and a strip retail development. And for Project Area 2, construction is anticipated to start in 2029 and complete in 2032. You can see here that the project, the developer project improvements are estimated to cost just over $300 million. The total reimbursement request incentive is just about $82.4 million, and we will dive deeper into that later. As I did mention, that in Redevelopment Project Area 2, there are 110 residential units. This is a change that would be approved by the Board if the ordinance is approved. After the TIFF Commission public hearing, after some feedback, the applicant offered to move some of the Project Area 2 residential units to a different parcel. Still within Redevelopment Project Area 2, you can see the TIFF Commission had the residential units in this parcel, and they were moved over to this parcel, still within Redevelopment Project Area 2, but would, because of just the acreage of each parcel, the density limitations that the city has, necessitated a reduction in the amount of units. So that unit reduction would be to 110 units total. Like I said, if this ordinance is passed, that would amend the TIFF Plan. It would both replace this map shown here with the preliminary site plan in the TIFF Plan, and it would also amend the references of either 300 total units or 150 units in Project Area 2 to 260 units or 110 units. And we will talk briefly with Baker Tilly also, but this change was not material enough to change any of the financial information in the TIFF Plan. So it just necessitated the map and the references to how many units there will be.
Lindsay, thank you. Just a quick, quick comment. I want to give deep appreciation and thanks to the developer and your team for being open to the idea and hearing the concerns that were raised at the TIFF Commission meeting, listening to members of the public, really helped embody what we've been trying to do here in City Hall, is make sure that the public is heard and understood, and that we work really hard to come up with realistic, practical solutions that everybody can claim a win on. So my deep appreciation to you all for being so willing. There was not a heavy lift to get this done by any means. And also, special appreciation and thanks to the neighbors and constituents that came to visit with me and helped me understand what your concerns were, so I could articulately relay those to the developer and put a good proposal together for them to consider. So thank you. This was one of those opportunities where we had as a community to be able to come together and solve it in not just an amicable way, but... together and solve it in not just an amicable way, but like, super spirited cooperative way. So, thank you to the residents that came and reached out. Thank you.
So I mentioned the reimbursed incentives. The request is for $82.4 million. We will dive deeper into these as we go through, but I want to hit now that this is, as is currently proposed, a pay-as-you-go project, meaning that the development has to be built, revenues have to be generated, in order to reimburse the developer. As it's currently proposed, the city is not at any financial risk for this plan. The city is not backing any bonds or anything like that. But as we will discuss throughout, there is a reimbursement cap, so that reimbursement level is capped at either this $82.4 number, or if the costs are higher, it's... I'm sorry, I mess that up every time, I think. But if the costs are lower than that, the reimbursement will be limited to 27.47% of the cost. But if the costs are higher, they would be limited to this $82.4 million number. As you know, we also have the city project as part of this Tiff Plan, and that would be Redevelopment Project Area 3. The city or the city's designee would be the developer of that project area. It is included within the full redevelopment area, but this project area is just about 17 acres. The city's project costs are currently estimated at just over $100 million. And again, like the developer projects, this is also a pay-as-you-go Tiff that would require the development to actually be built, revenues to generate, and then costs incurred to be able to reimburse back to the city or the city's designee. And the projected construction and completion date would be a start at early, or, I'm sorry, late 2026 or early 2027, and completing by 2029. And just for reference, you can see here that the city project area is in red, and then the Project Area 1 is in green, and Project Area 2 is in yellow. And of course, there's a couple different markers on here. Not everything is included that's notified on this map. It's included in the redevelopment area. Okay, so for the total public incentives that we are looking at tonight, the applicant is looking for a Tiff, but also a community improvement district, a transportation development district, and a Chapter 100 sales tax exemption on construction materials. That total reimbursement cap that I discussed is $82.4 million. That cap is divided between the first three incentives we have here. The tax increment financing incentive would be limited to $73.8 million. The community improvement district, through a sales tax on the community improvement district boundaries, would be capped at $4.2 million. The transportation development district, like the CID, has a sales tax that is generated within the boundaries of the development district, would also be capped at $4.2 million because it's a 1% sales tax on the same areas. And separate from the reimbursement cap would be the Chapter 100 sales tax exemption on construction materials. We'll talk a little bit more on this, but this is an estimated number because it's based on sales tax exemptions. We don't know exactly what those will be yet, just that the estimation at $2.5 million. And that's not included in the reimbursement cap because it's not an incentive that we're able to structure like that. We talked about the estimated schedule. We're looking at generally 2027 to 2032 for the developer project areas, and then late 2026, early '27 to 2029 for the city. And of course, you know, those are all based on market conditions and availability of materials, but that's the estimated schedule right now. So I will leave this on the screen while we talk a little bit more about the Tiff Plan. So as you know, the Tiff Commission held a public hearing on July 15th where it heard testimony and gathered other evidence that was considered in determining whether to recommend to the Board of Alderman that the Board of Alderman approved the Tiff Plan. At that hearing and in your staff report for tonight, we summarized that information, including the requirements of the Tiff Plan to be legally sufficient. There are items within the Tiff Act that we have to have in the Tiff Plan for it to be legally sufficient. At the close of the public hearing, the Tiff Commission did vote to approve, or, I'm sorry, to recommend that the Board of Alderman approve the Tiff Plan and that it is legally sufficient. I can go into detail there if anybody has any questions, but if not, I will move on. And also, as you are aware, at that Tiff Commission public hearing, the Tiff Commission did vote to recommend that the Board of Alderman make six findings in relation to the Tiff Plan. I can go into these in more detail, too, if we need to, and we will hear a little bit more from Baker Tilly on the financial analysis, but I will summarize quickly so that we don't have to go through all of that. So first, the Tiff Commission recommended that the Board of Alderman make a finding that the redevelopment area as a whole is a blighted area. It has not been subject to growth and development through investment by private enterprise. In addition, the Tiff Commission recommended that the Board of Alderman find that but for the use of tax increment financing, the project would not reasonably be developed. That's finding number one. Finding two is that the Tiff Commission did recommend that the Board of Alderman make a finding that the redevelopment plan conforms to the city's comprehensive plan, Branson Community Plan 2030. The third finding, the Tiff Commission did recommend that the Board of Alderman make a finding that the estimated dates for completion of the redevelopment projects and any retirement of obligations do not exceed 23 years from the date that a redevelopment project is authorized, that no redevelopment project is scheduled to be authorized within 10 years after the adoption of the Tiff Plan, and that no property be secured by eminent domain more than five years after the adoption of the ordinance. And I will also just note that there is no eminent domain that is anticipated. The fourth finding is that the Tiff Commission recommended that the Board of Alderman make a finding that the relocation plan for businesses and residences in the area has been developed and included in the Tiff Plan, and again, we don't anticipate that that would be needed. The fifth finding, the Commission recommended that the Board of Alderman make a finding that the cost-benefit analysis has been prepared and that it shows the economic impact of the Tiff Plan on each taxing district if the project is not built and if the project is built, including a financial impact study on each political subdivision. And that finding also includes that there is sufficient information from the developers for the Tiff Commission to evaluate whether the project as proposed would be financially feasible. The sixth finding, the Tiff Commission also recommended that the Board of Alderman make a finding that the Tiff Plan does not include the initial development of a gambling institution, and that is not included in the Tiff Plan either. So if there are any questions there, I can answer them, or if not, we can go to the financial advisors for a moment.
That was good?
No.
While they're getting the presentation up, I'll introduce myself. I'm Colby Krzanowski. I'm a senior manager with Baker Tilly. Joining me today is Tom Calico, Principal at Baker Tilly. And we prepared the financial due diligence on this project for the city of Branson, starting all the way at the... I wouldn't want to say the beginning of this year, but I think we began our work before then. But we almost have it. I'll talk about our timeline a little bit more while we get our presentation up, but I promise we'll be brief. So, there we go. This presentation is dated for today's date, August 26th, but we've maintained largely the same presentation on our financial due diligence throughout this process, and we'll dive into that a little bit more here. This is a presentation on our BUT4 report, which is the pillar of our due diligence for the city of Branson on this project. Before I get into the entertaining part of this, I'm going to go through a little bit of purpose and disclosure. There's a few elements of this analysis that I think are important to understand. The first is, as Lindsay stated, this analysis considers the BUT4 test, which is whether the project would occur without the requested incentive at the current market. We analyze the project as proposed when we prepare the report, and we look at it within the context of the current market. We, as Baker Tilly municipal advisors, are an independent consultant of the city, working for the city of Branson, and we carry no financial interest in the project. Third, this is not a market feasibility study. This study is related to the market return of the project as it is proposed. We are not doing a larger economic analysis. It is simply taking the assumptions of the project, evaluating them for the project as proposed, and reviewing it such. Also, this does need to be stated, the actual results of this development are expected to and necessarily will deviate from the analysis done here. We can't predict the future, but we do think we've done the best we can with the information presented to us. I think everyone is excited to see how the development will turn out. There have been a few project updates to give an indication of the work that's went into this project. We delivered our first due diligence deliverable, say that 10 times fast, in January of this year. We delivered the BUT4 analysis in late March and early April and have maintained an understanding of the project's evolution since then. There were two notable updates and one third that was a little bit less notable that Lindsay mentioned earlier. The BUT4 analysis was prepared at a time in which there was not an appraisal done for the various parcels of land considered in the development. The city went back to the developer and requested that they get third-party appraisals, which they did, satisfying the request of the city. There's a little bit more detail on that in the slides here. And the second is the revision of the project timeline. There were certain project elements moved in the timeline throughout the course of this project, which did not materially impact the results of our analysis. And the third, as Lindsay mentioned, was the change in the location and number of housing units, and that had the same outcome as the change in the project timeline originally contemplated in our last presentation. So for a project overview, we, again, saw quite a bit of this, so we're going to run through this. The only notable change here is, in the first column, the change in the number of housing units, and in the second, the... Sorry, no change. In the second, we're discussing the incentives, which would be the Tiff, the CID, the TDD, the incentive cap as it was contemplated in the BUT4 report, we prepared it, and the estimated value of the Stecom, which, unlike Tiff, CID, et cetera, is a cash flow savings. It's simply sales tax not paid versus sales tax collected and then remitted back to the project. Next is a little bit more on the project in terms. We have Tiff. Again, we went over this quite a bit, so we won't spend too much time here. 50% pilot of the sales tax, 100% pilot of the net new property tax or the property tax increment. The TDD and CID are both 1% sales taxes for 27 years on the area of the development, and the sales tax exemption is on construction materials during the period of construction. The incentive summary and boundaries is the same as presented by Lindsay earlier. We're looking at that $82,403,44 figure at the bottom corner, and you'll note that some of the boundaries may update, have updated, and may very well update throughout the project. We have our development site map we covered earlier. And now for the part where we really put our due diligence mind at work here. Our study approach, we believe, is very rigorous, and it covers five essential pillars. The first is that we evaluate the applicant's estimated project costs. This means that we take everything presented to us from the applicant and we compare it to all the best and most available data to see if what they are presenting is reasonable, whether it's understated, overstated, accounts for all knowable variables on our side. The second is to evaluate the estimated project revenues. We do our best to benchmark this against the data available to us and understand what, for example, the lease rates and some of the leased buildings or the land sale prices would be. Third, we consider the hypothetical sale of the asset. This one throws some people off, but when we review this figure, we're essentially valuing the development to better understand what the return on that development would be and come to a conclusion that what the city has been presented is concurrent with what we understand to be happening in the market. Fourth, we determine an internal rate of return without incentive. This is a rate of return analysis that takes out the cost of financing and some other variable market factors to understand what investors are looking for in the current market and whether this development meets those standards. And five, we compare that rate of return to investor expectations, and that's how we determine whether any reasonable investor would take on this investment in the current market. In our first conclusion, we evaluated the expenses and determined that they appear reasonable. We use for our basis of evaluation market data from CoStar, which is a very comprehensive and widely-used real estate database. Next is the building costs. We use a combination of comparable project data and a service called RS Means, which allows us to develop a very detailed construction budget and compare it to the current development as proposed, understanding all of the intricacies of the development and how best to evaluate that in the current market. One notable feature of this development is that one of the proposed occupants of a site on the development has a geological team. Excuse me for a moment. Nobody wants to hear my voice go sore, of course, when I'm working through this. One of the proposed occupants of the development actually has a geological division that does site work for the sites, for their site, and that was a really good basis of evaluation to use when understanding the site work, and in many cases, better than we get for other projects. As for the soft costs, they fell well within range of what we expect for this type of development, and those can be hard to pinpoint, but we do have market standards that we evaluate those against, and they were very much reasonable and within range of what we would expect. As for the revenue assumptions, we compared the apartment leases, net lease of the commercial retail sporting goods store, and the sale of the commercial pad sites. We evaluated this to other multifamily units in Branson using the same sources and did the same with commercial rents and comparable land sale prices using the data sets we discussed. As for the internal rate of return, at the time of evaluation in our analysis, we used the PWC Real Estate Investor Survey, fourth quarter of 2024, which would have been the most recent survey available to us at the time of publication of the report. And in the interceding months, there has not been much change in what we would expect to be the market range of return for that. We did determine that the project is unlikely to proceed BUT4 the requested incentives. And when we have a project that doesn't pass BUT4, and there are some factors, maybe because of how early the project is or the complexity of the project, we do try to sensitize that to see if some cost increased, if some revenue decreased, would the same be true? Would they still need an incentive? So we ran an analysis that showed that even with a 20% reduction in site work and building costs, the project would still not generate a market return without incentives, which is a considerable swing in the total cost. In summary, the applicant's cost and revenue assumptions appear to be reasonable based on third-party sources. The forecast internal rate of return without incentives is not sufficient, given the level of risk associated with the project, and the most significant challenge for the project appears to be the high cost related to site work, which we understand is not uncommon for the area, and is unlikely the project would occur in the current marketplace without the requested incentive. And this probably should say questions, but instead, it's a picture of me and my colleague, Tom, to tell you who did this. So this is the BUT4 test. This is a finding for the Tiff Commission. This is one piece of the broader due diligence that we had done for this project. We had also reviewed extensively the qualifications of the developer. We had maintained a financial analysis that contemplated the project in great detail throughout the project, so that was never delivered. It was just something we maintained throughout. We also assisted in preparation of the cost-benefit analysis in close cooperation with the Developers Council, using their assumptions and evaluating them throughout. With that, I'll conclude my presentation, open up to any questions, and appreciate everyone's time.
Thanks, Kobe. That's a little bit of research, wasn't it?
We do our best.
Any members of the board wishing to speak on this? Any input? Artie?
I think we'll also hear from the applicant team first.
Okay. There we go. There we go. Thank you for your help. Good evening, Mr. Cooper and the rest of the board. My name is Kurt Peterson. I'm here on behalf of the proposed developer tonight, which is Branson Meadows TIF Co. LLC. I have the developer's principal, Rob Phillips, just here in the second row with me, as well as the manager of this entire project, which I guess is an unenviable task, but we have Grant Wilkins here next to Rob. It's really been a privilege working on this project with the two of them over the last year, something of this magnitude. As I told the TIF Commission, I couldn't help myself because I feel like a kid in Disneyland when I'm down in Branson. Our five kids and my wife and I just absolutely adore coming down here. It's not usually for work, it's usually for play, but it's really just special to be here, working on something that if approved, it's hard to say this, but will even enhance Branson more in what's available to people that live here and then all the people like our family that come and visit often. In terms of Rob and Grant, we've been working on this for, again, about a year, and from the very beginning, they said, win-win, Kurt, win-win. This has got to be good for both us because we're a private developer and this takes a lot of time and money, but it's got to be good for Branson. It's got to be good for the community, too. And from the very beginning, I heard a lot of faith, family, and flag, and I heard a lot of 12-month businesses. We talked about that a lot as we put this together. So when the time came to incorporate potentially a city sports complex project, that was actually enthusiastically embraced, as Kathy can attest, because, again, we wanted a win-win for everybody here. So in short, we are thrilled as an entire team to be here in front of you tonight after a long time working on this with city staff. So before bringing to life some of developers' actual project components, which we want to do and make sure you really understand the exciting things to come if this is supported here tonight, I want to start with the who. So this developer is proposing to partner with this community, and you deserve to know a little bit more about who they are. So I'm not going to read this slide to you, but it's in the packet, and you can kind of run your eyes over it. The short of it is that you've, again, met Rob, you've met Grant. I want to emphasize just some of their extensive experience in short of what you're looking at on the screen. You're seeing examples of just a few of their successful projects in their portfolio, and the reason we selected these individual ones is because it gives you a sense of really the breadth of who they are and what they've done, multiple types of development, retail, sports, mixed use, including residential, and even office. You'll see projects across Oklahoma, and you'll see projects here in Missouri, for instance, here at Branson Mill. So Rob and Grant are not new to Branson. They've been good community partners and local business partners, and without question, I can tell you, as we move into the project itself, you can have confidence in these individuals as your developer for this project. So now we get into a little bit of the what. So we heard a little bit of that from Lindsay, and I want to just dig in a bit more. So on the screen, you can see that same map that Lindsay showed, a little bit of a crazy object there highlighted in yellow, but that is the land. It's 136 acres that goes into this overall project. And the site plan, as we superimpose that on top, and nobody said it tonight, but if you're like me, my whole team, I'm always like, north has to be up, north has to be up. There was so much going laterally here, they turned it. So you can see sight and sound over here on the far left. That is north, says you're orienting yourself to this overall project. So there are three parts to the project, three phases, three parts. The first is, at a high level, described as extensive site work and public infrastructure. Can't do anything without that. And then there's four key components of the project itself. There's the Bible encounter, there's the Mammoth Sports Entertainment Facility, there's the hotel, and there's workforce housing. So that, again, is phase one, and we're going to come back to that in a second. Phase two is anticipated to be a sporting goods retailer, restaurants, some inline retail, convenience store, additional workforce housing, and rental cabins. And my thunder was stolen both by Kathy and by Lindsay, but when I say that, I just mean there was a lot that went on behind the scenes in listening to the public at the TIF Commission, so I won't repeat all of it, but you saw how that workforce housing phase two was moved on the screen in front of you from over near some residential and moved, at least on the screen, it's to the north, but on the screen over to the left away. So that was, I'm echoing now from the developer's side, we saw that as a huge win, and thanks for working with us, Kathy, on that to make that happen. That's the second phase. The third phase, which isn't necessarily sequentially when I say phase, I'll say third part, is the city's project, and that's the city sports facility project that you all know about. So given that phase two is down the line a bit, and we're going to focus immediately, if this project is approved by this body, on phase one, I thought I would just dig in specifically into those components of the phase one project that I mentioned, those four components. So first, we're going to start off with, not picking favorites at all, but I will say we're going to start with the Bible encounter. So Dr. Bobby Sparks, I saw him, I didn't get to say hi tonight, Billy Ong, there's Dr. Sparks, Billy's right next to him here in the third row. As you know, Dr. Sparks, I think many of you know at least, that Dr. Sparks is the president of the Tabernacle Ministries, and he's been at it for four decades plus, so he has just a wealth, a wealth of knowledge if you Google and just read about him and what he has to offer here to Branson and this project. He teaches at seminaries, churches, conferences, specific expertise, among other things, is on the Old Testament tabernacle, which you'll see in a minute, is very relevant to what's proposed. Billy doesn't need much of an introduction, I've come to find. Every time I start to say Billy, they're like, oh, we know Billy. So everybody knows Billy had a very successful career with the Hirschen Family Entertainment, and he brings a lot to this project to make it come to life. So this exciting vision of Bible encounter, what is it? It's on 15 acres of ground, and it's a unique, interactive experience that helps you use all your senses as you travel back to ancient Israel, so you know, see, touch, taste, smell, hear, all of it. And it will include, back to Dr. Sparks, you know, renowned expertise, it will include a full-size replica of the tabernacle, which makes sense, as you know, where the site is, sits up real high on the hill. Other experiences, which, again, just like a TIF Commission, I just picked a few out because I didn't want to read you a really long list, but as you travel through the overall exhibit and experience, you'll see things like the Egyptian experience for the Israelites. You'll see about Abraham and Sarah and their prominent role, Mount Sinai, Jericho, and Calvary, just to name a few. The overall experience, unless you have little kids that are crying like I would, would be about two and a half to three hours. So the idea is it's robust, there's lots and lots of substance that will be part of this. The target open is spring of 2027, could be a little before, could be a little after, but that's what we're aiming for right now. And now I think I need to ask my friend to go ahead and press the button. Thank you very much. Hopefully they gave you a little taste. Words do one thing, but you get a fly-through like that, and I hope that helps you get a sense for the exciting project that that is. One more item before we move to the second of the four components of phase one. I personally have a little bit of a crush on Sight &amp; Sound. My wife grew up in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, where it started, and we always come down to see the shows. David is in my head, Psalm 23, the song, right? Many of you have seen it, you know what I mean? It just gets in your head. I mean, just amazing. So I admit with that background, I was thrilled when the project team showed me this letter, and it's the only thing I'll read to you if you don't mind, just because to me, this is so meaningful from somebody like Sight &amp; Sound, and they're talking about specifically the Bible encounter. It reads this, "To whom it may concern," Branson TIF Commission at the time, equally to the board. "I am writing to express our support of tax increment financing for the Branson Meadows redevelopment project. We believe this inspired vision will be a significant benefit to Tannehill County and the Branson community in the near and long-term future. As neighbors to this project, we are excited to see the creation of new and diverse experiences that will serve to both attract and retain guests of all ages, as well as benefit the quality of life for the Branson and broader Tannehill County community. The location is prime for this, given its beautiful setting, ease of access, and quality infrastructure, and the level of excellence evident in this investment will continue to expand the destination draw to this region while also providing job creation and housing opportunities. We also appreciate that the variety of new attractions, and particularly the year-round sports complex, will help expand the season, that people travel to Branson and increase the opportunity for broader employment beyond the peak tourism season. Sight &amp; Sound endorses and appreciates the commitment to our region that this redevelopment project represents. We humbly ask that the commission, in this case, the board, support the Branson Meadows TIF and the historic progress this will create to serve our community and the many friends who visit us for years to come. Sincerely signed, D. Matthew Neff, Chief Executive Officer of Sight &amp; Sound." Part number two of phase one, Mammoth Sports. Mammoth Sports is an affiliate of Mammoth Construction. It's a very successful sports facility construction company with offices in several places, Kansas, Missouri, Arizona, Florida, South Dakota. You may have seen some of their trucks, they usually mark them up pretty good, so you recognize them. This will be a multi-sport entertainment venue with food and beverage. It'll have sports experiences. Anticipated include pickleball, baseball, basketball, putting green, and driving range. And with both indoor and outdoor amenities and component, it is a year-round attraction. Mammoth piloted portions of this project in Wichita, Kansas, and also in Marion, Illinois, but this will be the first full-scale vision, version, I should say, of this that they're going to launch here in the city of Branson. So here's a quick video also to give you a taste of that.
This is recreation reborn. Golf, baseball, pickleball, and more. This is Fieldhouse. A multi-sport mixtape made to bring out the competitor in everyone, where food and drink provide the perfect timeout, and the only competitive social experience in the country delivering multiple sports in one location. All play, all day. And for hundreds of thousands of visitors to every Fieldhouse every year, this is a place built just for players, where competition creates camaraderie, where highlights become memories, and where good games, good vibes, and good times win the day. Come out swinging. Mammoth Fieldhouse. Who's got next? This is recreation more.
Okay, that's component number two. Component number three of phase one is an approximately 200-room hotel by O'Reilly Hospitality Management. For those that know the hotel industry, you know O'Reilly. They're highly accomplished and very respected for great hotels. This hotel would be designed to serve the overall project but also other aspects of Branson that need hotel nights. You have a few of those here. Here's a quick clip on O'Reilly just to get you excited about that part of the project.
At O'Reilly Hospitality Management, we build success stories that stand the test of time. For nearly 20 years, developers and investors have trusted OHM to turn bold ideas into thriving destinations where guests feel at home and communities grow. Our expertise covers every detail, from site selection and design to construction, operations, and long-term growth. Behind every project is a dedicated team that cares deeply about our guests, our partners, and the neighborhoods we serve. We lead with sustainability, reducing our footprint and partnering with communities to make a real difference. From trusted hotel brands to one-of-a-kind restaurants and entertainment venues, we bring innovation and a personal touch to every project. When you partner with OHM, you gain more than a management company. You gain a team that protects your investment and helps it thrive. Because for us, every project is personal. Every handshake is a promise, and every opening day is just the beginning. Let's build what's next, together.
And then the final component of phase one is something we've heard over and over and over again, no, not just from you, Kathy, but a lot of people, is that we need more housing in this city. And it's not just housing, someplace that has a roof, it's quality housing that's affordable. That's what we hear, whether it's teachers, first responders, quality, affordable housing. Developer, as part of this project, this is the fourth component of phase one, will construct approximately 150 quality workforce housing units to help meet this demand. Although all the other components of phase one are probably, I'd say, more attractive and exciting, I mean, they have videos, right? I don't have a video for workforce housing, but I will tell you that developer is just as passionate about it, and maybe more than the other components in a lot of ways. We really believe this will have an impact on many lives here, wish we could do 1,000 units, but phase one, we're going to do 150 and at least make a dent and help bring affordable housing of quality nature. That gives you a sense, hopefully, a little deeper sense, without belaboring, you know, what are each of these four components of phase one. Where I wanted to end before the appropriate time for questions is really looking at the, I'd call it the sources and uses you can see on the screen. So the TIF revenues that we project and propose, and Lindsay got into a lot of the details, I might get that detail, and so did Colby, they focus on three areas. If you really think about just high level, there's these incentive revenues, what are they going to be used for? There's three pieces. One is helping acquire the land. This is a huge land acquisition process. Two is the extensive site work and infrastructure, all the public streets and utility extensions. You guys know how dramatic that is, to be able to then set the table for the uses. And then the last, the third piece, is on helping with some of the workforce housing costs. As you can see, not a lot of people are getting it done. It's really hard to do that, and the incentives help to actually deliver it. So you can see the overall, as you look at the screen here, you can see the different columns, and again, Lindsay went over the details, but $300 million of estimated total cost across the first two developer phases, and then you can see the different incentive components at the top, and you can see what each one would pay for. And it's important to realize that what you don't see there is there's still a huge private side investment of approximately, do you know the math, $215 million. So the TIF won't happen and the other incentives unless the developer actually produces. This isn't one of those situations where somebody goes to a city and says, will you cut me a check? Will you give me bond proceeds upfront, and I never have to put any money in? No, this couldn't be any farther from the truth. Developer has a lot of skin in this game, takes a lot of risk, but believes in the city and believes in this vision, and that's what you can see from this slide. So with that, there's a lot of other things we are excited about and we could talk about, but I will rest here and just trust at the right time that Mr. Cooper will direct, that if there's questions, I'd love to come back up and answer any questions you have about this project. But most of all, thank you for giving us the time tonight, and thank you for enabling your staff to work with us this long to be ready to present this to you tonight. Thank you. Thank you. Any board members have anything? Artie? Anyone from the audience? Have anything? Huh? Well, that's what my paper. Hearing none? Oh. Yeah. We'll have to, we'll have to, ma'am, we'll have to run the microphone to you so people are online. Well, it's online, so people can hear.
You listed 260 housing units, and then you listed 300 apartments. Are these separate or are they combined?
I think there's just some confusion there. It's 260 residential units total. The previous number was 300, but that number was adjusted after the TIF Commission public hearing.
Since these are going to be tax incentives, is there going to be some kind of a limit on what rent can be charged on these units?
Just a little bit ahead of me, and next with the TIF contract, we will discuss that there is a 30%, a goal for 30% of the units to have rent at $750 to $1,100.
That's still way too much for a teacher to afford on a teacher's salary and for most of our residents to afford that actually live here.
Okay.
Ma'am, can you state your name for the record?
My name's Julie Metz.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
All right, that's it? Are we ready to vote on this one? Did you have something, Glenn? Go ahead.
Just one quick question, Lindsay, since you're up there. A question that's been asked of me throughout the process, and I think we all A question that's been asked of me throughout the process, and I think we all know the answer, but not everybody wants to dive into the couple hundred pages of documents that are out there on this thing. We've heard about the incentives through sales tax. And as you know, in Branson, our sales tax system is fairly complicated, ranging anywhere from nine some percent up to 10 some percent. Could you just highlight what taxes are in the pool that the incentives will come from?
Sure. So the way that TIF works, we have economic activity taxes that are collected by the TIF, and then half of them are distributed to taxing jurisdictions. The other half go to reimburse the developer for their costs. And that economic activity tax is just very broadly usually sales taxes. The TIF Act tells us what is and isn't included, so the city can't, you know, exclude or include other taxes. But generally, it would be the city's sales tax is collected. The tourism tax is partially collected, not the hotel portion of the tourism tax, but just generally economic activity taxes are what is included in that sales tax, and that would include CID and TDD sales taxes as well.
Well, we, it has to be on microphone, ma'am, so.
So sales, sales tax. So that affects us? We're paying for this project by sales tax?
TIF Tax Increment Financing does collect sales taxes, yes.
So we're paying for the project?
So maybe I can provide a little bit of clarity. So the taxes that are being, the tax that we'll be paying for it is the tax that's generated by the projects that are built. So it's sales taxes from sales that are made on those properties, which don't exist today. So right now, we're getting $0. And were it not for the development being built, right, we wouldn't have the money to be able to be generated to generate the tax that helps to compensate back for some of the costs of building the project.
But we will be paying more taxes.
No, you're not paying, you're not paying more sale. You yourself are not, you're not paying more sales tax. It's the, the properties that are generating income, the new properties that aren't built today that are in this project area, they're the ones who will be scooping up those tax collections from those properties and then goes back in part of it to reimburse for some of the costs.
So to be clear, we will not see an increase in any of our taxes, including sales tax?
No. If you're shopping in that TIF development, you're going to pay a little bit more in overall taxes, just on, say, the CID tax and the TDD tax. But there's lots of areas in the city right now that have different CID taxes, like downtown's got one. You pay a little bit more sales tax if you shop there, for example. But no, otherwise, your regular daily life won't be affected.
Well, mine will. The low-income housing you're proposing is, is going on the road that I take to get to my home every day. And it's going to be a lot of units, it's going to be a lot of traffic. These are low-income housing units. These people, I know what you're calling them, workforce. These people that are the workforce are not going to be making high salaries. They're going to be making low salaries. Thus, they need low-income housing. So I am-
Were you here for the first part where we talked about we moved the location from the original proposal?
I know. You moved it over by the, by the fire station, which is how I get to my home every day.
Okay, I, thank you.
I bought a, I bought a house in a very quiet neighborhood on a deadened street, and now I'm going to be passing hundreds of units of low-income housing. I'm not happy with that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ma'am, can you state your name for the record as well?
Jan Miller.
Anybody else? All right. Are we ready to vote on this particular item? Okay. Are we doing a roll call or just? No?
A voice vote is fine.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say same sign. Hearing none.
The result of the vote is 6-0. Motion carries. Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number 6582, an ordinance approving a tax increment financing redevelopment agreement between the city of Branson and Branson Meadows TIF Co. LLC for the implementation of the Gretna Road and Town and Country Drive Tax Increment Financing Plan and authorizing the mayor to execute contract documents.
All right, you've heard the first reading of bill number 6582. Do you have more, Lindsay, to input here, or are we just moving on?
Nope, I've got some extra.
Go for it.
Actually, can we get it on the floor just really quick?
Oh, we have a motion to second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second, and we'll begin with Lindsay again.
Yes. So as, as was mentioned, the TIF contract implements the TIF plan, and I will go through just a couple of details of the TIF contract for your awareness. We've discussed the project details. I'm not going to go through all of them again, but the, the development improvements are included in the TIF contract, as is the redevelopment schedule. A few, a few other highlights. Of course, the applicant is still required to comply with all the city codes. The TIF contract doesn't allow any, any changes in there and have to maintain the improvements just like any other business in the area. As we did just mention, the residential units, there is a goal to have 30% of those be available at $750 to $1,100. Part of, the biggest part of the TIF contract really is that reimbursement cap that limits the reimbursement amount to $82.4 million or to 27.47% of the cost, whichever is less. And, and the way that we are able to enforce this reimbursement cap is that there is a process for the applicant to certify all of their costs with the city. When projects have been completed, the city will go through receipts and invoices and lien waivers and all sorts of documentation to make sure that costs were incurred on the development and that those costs have all been paid and everything is good there. So that is how we are able to enforce that reimbursement cap through that certification And then again, we mentioned that outside of the reimbursement cap is the Chapter 100 Sales Tax Exemption on Construction Materials, and that's something that is difficult for us to track because it's used anywhere. It's used within the county, within the state. But if they do use it within the city, we do ask that they retain those receipts and provide them to the city so that we can have more information on how that is used in the city. The contract will also establish the process for how the city will reimburse the applicant. There is a process after the costs have been certified, where after revenue has been received from these projects, that the applicant is able to seek that reimbursement request. As far as ongoing reporting goes, the contract does require the applicant to present to the Board of Aldermen either personally or virtually every year while the improvements are still being built. When they have been completed, then it switches to a five-year reporting period, which is also required by the TIF Act. A big portion, or well, I shouldn't say a big portion, a portion of the TIF contract is, you can see, Exhibit J is a termination agreement for the Heartland Center project. You may recall in January of 2024, the board, the city, did enter into an agreement with Heartland Center for the Mammoth project. After that contract went through, this project obviously expanded much larger than just the Mammoth Sporting Complex. And so as a result of that, the, the approval of the TIF contract will also terminate that Heartland Center agreement. And that is Exhibit J in the TIF contract. Exhibit I is a different contract template. It is a template agreement for a sales tax revenue reimbursement agreement. As part of the applicant's negotiations, they negotiated to include this template agreement in the contract. The sales tax revenue reimbursement agreement does not today reimburse anybody for any funds. It is just a template agreement that could be used in some of the projects that are in the redevelopment area. It would only reimburse the city's 1% general sales tax, so not tourism, not public safety, not transportation, just the 1% general sales tax. And that also would be subject to future negotiation and, and special, not special, but secondary approval from, from the city. Part of the contract also is, is that, you know, the developer will develop the residential units and the sporting goods store, and they will do infrastructure and site work throughout the entire development. But we don't expect them to hold all of these businesses for all 23 years of this TIF plan. So the contract also includes provisions about assigning the contract to other parties or just transferring property within the redevelopment area. They would still be required to maintain the project and to remit sales taxes as they are required to through the TIF Act. So that, there are provisions for future assignment or future transfer of the contract as well. Let's see. Okay, so finally, the administrative fee, the city does receive a 2% administrative fee for administering the TIF contract, and that would be 2% of the TIF revenues that are generated by the project, and that is to reimburse the city for its costs in certifying all of the costs and just ongoing administration throughout the years of the TIF plan. So there, you do have a summary of the entire TIF contract in your staff report. Are there any questions, concerns?
Any board members? Anyone from the audience? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
I did not catch a, Marshall was, he's not on there. Okay, so the result of the vote is 5-0. Motion carries. 4-0. So sorry. It's, it's okay. It's okay. It still passes.
Are we good?
Yep. Apologies. So, Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number 6583, an ordinance approving an amended plan for an industrial development project and cost benefit analysis for the Branson Meadows project, authorizing the city to engage bond council for the issuance of industrial revenue bonds and authorizing all actions necessary to issue bonds.
You've heard the first reading of bill number 6583. Do I have a motion approving the bill? Second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, and back to Lindsay.
Okay. So this is an amended plan for an industrial project, and that is because, as we discussed, the residential units were moved to a different parcel, and because of that, the plan also had to be amended. So that, that amendment has been processed, and the notices went out as required. But just talking very generally about Chapter 100 plans, you might be more familiar with Chapter 100 plans that actually effectuate property tax abatement. That's not what we are doing here. The city will become owner of the properties within the Chapter 100 plan for the purpose of effectuating the city's sales tax exemption on construction materials to the applicant for that work, as I mentioned, the residential units, the sporting goods store, and the site work and infrastructure. That is what would cover the Chapter 100 plan. There is third-party development of the site as well, but that would not be covered in this Chapter 100 plan. So we have discussed the Chapter 100 stecum is what we call it. It is an estimate, so we have estimated that value at $2.5 million, and that would be realized over the course of construction on those developer portions of the project. As I just mentioned, the applicant would be required to retain and to provide to the city receipts for these sales tax exemption use in, within the city, and that's all I've got on the Chapter 100 plan unless there are questions.
Questions, board? Man, they're quiet tonight. Anyone in the audience? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 5-0. Motion carries. Your Honor, this is, the next item is the public hearing and first reading of bill number 6584, an ordinance approving the petition for establishment of the Branson Mills Community Improvement District and establishing the Branson Mills Community Improvement District.
We will now open a public hearing and begin with a staff report from Lindsay.
Yes, so we have discussed the details of the project tonight. This public hearing is just on the proposed community improvement district, the Branson Mills Community Improvement District. We talked a little bit about CIDs tonight. They are a separate political subdivision, so they are separate from the city, and they also have the authority to impose a, up to a 1% sales and use tax within the boundaries of the district. That does two things. One, it reimburses the developer for the public improvements that are built within the CID, but also it helps pay down the TIF a little bit faster because that CID revenue is partially collected by the TIF. So to establish the CID, the Board of Aldermen must find that the CID petition meets the requirements of the CID Act. So we, and myself and the city clerk have both reviewed the CID petition and believe it is sufficient, but I will go through the details of the petition just for your review. So first, it is signed by more than 50% of the property owners, both by headcount and by assessed valuation. The name of the district would be the Branson Mills Community Improvement District. The legal description and a map of the district are included in your staff report and in the petition, and it would cover just the two developer project areas, not the city project area. This CID would be a political subdivision that has the ability to levy that 1% sales tax after a vote from the qualified voters within the boundaries of the CID. It would not impose real property taxes, business license taxes, or special assessments. It will have a five-member Board of Directors. The applicant has provided three of the initial members. Those members would be Chad Stitten, Casey Klein, and Billy Ong. The final two members would be appointed by the city, and that would be coming at the next reading in September. Those, those last two members and the successive members of the Board of Directors would be appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the Board of Aldermen. We do anticipate that the CID would exist for 27 years, and the five-year plan is attached to the CID petition, which includes that the district purposes are to provide funding for the costs of the project and the improvements within the CID, to pay for the formation of the CID, and also to provide operating and maintenance costs. Those CID improvements would be parking facilities, public improvements, and then related infrastructure to those improvements. And that is all I have on the CID. If there are any questions from the board?
Board? Anyone in the audience? Come on down right here, ma'am.
My name is Ronnie Hastings. I just have a question. So the TIF is going to be 1% sales tax added on everything that's sold by anything that's in those properties. So if you go shop in those properties, you'll pay an extra 1% sales tax for anything you buy or in those. That's the TIF part of the funding.
It's, they are separate ideas?
The TIF is what I'm talking, asking about, not the CID, the TIF.
The TIF collects sales taxes. It does not place new sales taxes within the district.
Right. It collects, it collects sales taxes. I understand that. But if you are a business owner, you're going to charge an extra 1% beyond what the city or the state or the county is paying. So if we pay 9% in other parts of the city, if you're a business in that district, you'll charge 10%, so you can pass 1% back to the city. Is that how it will work?
This is just a public comment period for comment, not question and answer.
I mean, I live in, I live in Branson Hills, so I shop at Branson Hills, and I know I pay higher sales tax when I shop at Branson Hills than when I shop in other parts of the city. So that's what I'm saying is-
Ma'am, Joe's going to answer that.
Mr. President and members of the board, if I can help to clarify, tax increment financing, TIF, does not add any new taxes. Whatever taxes would already be collected by every taxing jurisdiction that would apply, whether it's a school district on a property tax, whether it would be, you know, if you had a fire district or the city, a county sales tax, anything like that, TIF merely collects taxes. Now, a different component of this particular plan that is in front of the city this evening would create the CID, and that is what the public hearing that we're here for right now is designed to do. That CID, as Lindsay just said, is a separate political subdivision. That political subdivision has the authority to impose up to an additional 1% sales tax. So if that is approved, the CID would exist, they would go through a process- So if that is approved, the CID would exist, they would go through a process to get a vote to approve their sales tax. If that, if that goes through, then the CID would impose an additional 1% sales tax that the TIF would then collect.
Okay, so I was incorrect, because Branson Hills is a CID that has imposed an extra 1% sales tax when you shop at Walmart or Target or any place that's in that Branson Hills CID. So that's the difference between the CID and the TIF. So the CID is the one that could add 1% sales tax. Any of those businesses can charge an extra 1% on anything we buy. We could choose not to shop there and then not pay additional taxes, but if you shop there, then you will pay an additional 1% if the SID approves putting that through.
The commenter is exactly correct. You know, essentially, it's an opportunity for citizens to vote with their feet. If you don't want to pay an additional 1% or whatever percent sales tax in that particular shopping center, then don't shop there.
Yeah.
Okay, and the TIF is what collects that money to submit to?
Yeah, and I think, again, you know, to reiterate, you know, one of the real benefits of including a community improvement district, a CID, in a TIF project is, you know, and as Ms. Step was mentioning, is the fact that, A, there isn't, there isn't sales tax being generated on these properties right now. Zero sales taxes are being paid or collected out there today.
Because it's no, there's no, it's empty land.
The Butfor analysis essentially said that this project cannot go forward without the incentives that have been requested, and that is what the city's financial advisors verified, is the fact that it could not go forward without these incentives. Okay? So, you know, with that...
So that, that's what I'm, I was trying to clarify, the SID versus the TIF?
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? No? Board, do you have something, Ralph?
No.
No, okay. All right, this public hearing is closed. You've heard the first reading of bill number 6584. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Already got it, second. We have a motion in a second. Any members of the board wishing to speak on this matter? No? Anyone in the audience? We already heard. All right, let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 5-0, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number 6585, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute the cooperative agreement for the administration of the Branson Mills Community Improvement District.
You've heard the first reading of bill number 6585. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
Second.
Motion in a second, and Lindsey?
Yes, the SID cooperative agreement is an agreement that governs the administration of the SID. It's an agreement between the city, the developer, and the district. So once, if the district is formed, once it is formed, it would also enter into this agreement. I will hit just a few highlights. While the Department of Revenue does collect the SID revenues, the city will administer all of the functions that are not administered by the state, and that could include enforcement of the SID tax if needed. If, if, as discussed earlier, the half of the SID sales tax is collected by the TIF, so the cooperative agreement also governs that collection and makes sure that that occurs and happens. The city will also keep records related to the dispersment of SID funds, as it does reimburse the developer for projects within the SID. As required by the TIF contract, the applicant will need to certify their costs and make sure that the city does have all the documentation it needs for that, and then only after that will the city actually reimburse. Again, the Board of Aldermen will have an opportunity to review and comment on the annual budget as required by the SID Act, and finally, the district is its own political subdivision, so it does have to comply with the Sunshine Law. Just separately, as a, as a political subdivision, the cooperative agreement places additional requirements on them to provide the city notice and agenda packets if they're available at least three days before the SID board meeting, and then if there are emergency meetings, they would also be required to send those to the city as soon as practicable. Are there any questions on the SID cooperative agreement?
No one? Anyone in the audience have a question? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 5-0, motion carries.
Madam Clerk? Can we take a five-minute recess?
We can.
Is that cool?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Let's do it.
We'll be back in five. Waiting on Artie. All right. We ready to resume?
Yes.
You've got it. Oh, is the mayor still on?
The mayor is on, but Marshall is not. Alderman Haldren is not.
Okay. All right, item 13, is that where we are?
Yes.
All right.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number 6586, an ordinance authorizing city staff and consultants to file a petition for the Gretna Road and Town and Country Drive Transportation Development District.
You've heard the first reading of bill number 6586. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, and Lindsey?
Yes, this is the last portion of this incentives package for this Gretna Road and Town and Country Drive project. The ordinance in front of you would authorize city staff and consultants to file a petition for the establishment of the Gretna Road and Town and Country Drive Transportation Development District. The TDD functions very similarly as a SID. It has an, up to a 1% general sales tax that can be imposed, and it would be established for 27 years. We do, the process to approve it is a little bit different. We do actually file a petition in Tanneen County Circuit Court to approve, to establish that Transportation Development District. The petition would include the name of the proposed district, which is the Gretna Road and Town and Country Drive Transportation Development District. Again, like the SID, the boundaries would be just the developer project areas, not the city project area. The proposed projects would include development and construction of new streets and roads within the redevelopment area, or I'm sorry, within the boundaries of the TDD, and then also redevelopment of existing streets as may be needed, particularly Gretna Road and Town and Country Drive likely. Additionally, the TDD projects are anticipated to include signalization, signage, parking lots, related improvements and infrastructure that is needed for that. The petition would include estimated project costs and anticipated revenues of the TDD, and like the SID, it also would have a five-member Board of Directors. The petition would also seek an authorization to seek a 1% sales and use tax after being approved by the qualified voters. I will take any questions on the TDD.
All right. Any Aldermen, questions? Anyone in the audience want to speak on this? All right, hearing none, let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries. Your honor, this is the first reading of bill number sixty-five eighty-seven and ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute the cooperative agreement for the administration of the Gretna Road and Town and Country Drive Transportation Development District.
You've heard the first reading of bill number sixty-five eighty-seven. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
So moved.
Motion and a second. And Lindsey?
Last one for me. So this is, this cooperative agreement is very much like the SID cooperative agreement. Again, it is between the city, the developer and the district. Once the district is, is established, it would also enter into the cooperative agreement. It would govern the relationship between the parties and collection and distribution of the TDD revenues. Again, the Department of Revenue will collect the TDD sales tax revenues, but the city would administer all their functions that are not administered by the state. Like the SID, the TDD half of its revenues will be collected by the TIF and would go towards paying those costs while the other half of the TDD revenues would go towards paying the TDD project costs. Like, like the SID contract too, the applicant will be required to certify their project costs so that the city is able to ensure that we hit that reimbursement cap. And only after those projects have been certified and completed and revenue is generated would the city reimburse those costs. Finally, just like the district is a political subdivision and it is subject to the sunshine law. But in addition to that requirement, we also ask that they provide agenda packets three days ahead of any regular meetings. And as emergency meetings are necessary, that those packets also get to the city as soon as practicable, so that we're able to see, see those agenda items. So if there are any questions on the cooperative agreement?
Anyone from the audience? There are none. Let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries. Your honor, the next item is the public hearing, a first reading of bill number sixty-five eighty-eight and ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of Branson, Missouri approving the extension of the term of the Historic Downtown Branson Community Improvement District approving the second amended and restated cooperative agreement between the district and the city of Branson, Missouri and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement.
All right, we will now open a public hearing and begin with a staff report. Is Saul in here? Oh, he is here. From our city attorney, Salon. I know. I just wanted to say it wrong, just to make him smile.
You got the smile. All right, so this one's a little bit unique in that normally, well, this is a bill that was put forward by an alderman. And so I am presenting because I have reviewed the bill for legal sufficiency. But what is attempting to be accomplished here is to renew the SID for the downtown CID. And along with that, a cooperative agreement. The, the ordinance as posted and noticed, I have reviewed for legal sufficiency and also the agreement. But I want to make clear that does not mean that it has received my endorsement. I don't have any weight. I'm not an alderman. I'm just a legal guy that reviews it for legal sufficiency. The policy determinations are made by our elected officials. So with that said, generally, the terms of the SID proposed in this agreement, there are several of them in the actual agreement. But generally speaking, what we have put in there, what Alderman Schultz, who put this bill forward, put in there is a nine percent payment by the SID board to the city to assist the city in taking care of enhancements in the district such as landscaping at the stops, all kinds of different things. But that would only trigger if the SID brought in six hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of revenue. The SID originally presented to us a number of six hundred and fifty, but Alderman Schultz thought it was, be good to get that number higher so that we didn't take them down below a baseline of six fifty that they maybe thought they needed to have. That was at least the, the thinking there. And I'll let Alderman Schultz speak more to that if he wants to in a second. The other terms here is that the term to approve it for was listed at ten years. I think that's a, a key term for the board to know. And then, let me see if there's, what other terms are key that I think it's important for the board to know. That's probably the juice of it. And, and I understand that we may hear later from the SID on maybe some alternatives in the comments section. Based on the conversation I just had, but that's what was presented and prepared by legal counsel prior to this meeting. So yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Board? Do you have any comments? Do you have any comments?
Can I?
Yeah. Alderman Schultz?
Yeah, in, in general. The, you've, many people have heard me speak about the CIDs with the Branson. We've got, just in Ward Two, that Dr. Lucas and I represent, we've got four CIDs in that district. And, you know, we've got issues with various CIDs in terms of honoring bond commitments, sunshine law compliance, and things that I spoke out before. But I just want to underscore a difference with this CID. The, this particular CID, I've attended their, all their board meetings, nearly all their board meetings since I've been an alderman. They do an excellent job with the sunshine law requirements. They've been fully compliant in terms of supplying their proposed annual budget on time to our city clerks so that the aldermen can review and comment. They're also very timely on filing their annual results with the city so that we have those entered on our records as well, as well as with the state requirements for filing. And I would also say it's also a CID that tends to operate with great fiscal responsibility. They have managed to balance budget throughout. And as we all know, sitting here throughout the last three years, maybe a little bit longer, they've, when they had a budget surplus, they've approached the city and funded several hundred thousand dollars worth of projects within the district on a volunteer basis. So in all, in all, this is a SID board that has a totally different makeup than what I've, I've typically talked about. Their board of directors is comprised of a sitting judge, a former alderman, and several respected members of the business community that have their heart into the CID to make sure that it does the right type of work for their improvement district. From my viewpoint, and really to get to the gist of why this is on the agenda tonight, there's really three things that have to be thought of when it comes to renewing a CID. About fifteen months ago, the CID approached the city and asked that we start a renewal process. And then the aldermen require, probably remember that, I think it was in April, we unanimously approved a twenty-year extension of the CID on a first reading. And before we got to the second reading, the request came from staff that we hold off on the second reading because they wanted to redo the cooperation agreement at that time. That's one part of it, is that we as aldermen need to vote to renew the CID itself, and that's by state statute. The other part is the cooperation agreement, which I'm sure we'll talk a fair bit about tonight yet throughout the discussion. But the third part is what really brings us here tonight to talk about this tonight. And this has got, from what I can see, no discussion, no public discussion from an aldermanic perspective, and that's the renewal of the tax itself. This CID has a one percent tax that has been agreed to by the residents of the district. And that tax will expire this April. It's not simply a matter of saying, let's renew the CID and boom, the tax just continues on. It's a completely separate process. And what concerns me and what brings it on to the agenda tonight is I checked with the county clerk on the process involved in renewing the tax for the CID. And it's almost all driven by state statutes. There's several statutes that she laid out that generate the timeline for this. But suffice it to say that there's a window, and we're almost up against one of those windows by a few days as we sit here right now, that will enter one of those windows. Now, we trigger the renewal of the tax once the aldermen approve the renewal of the CID. That starts that timeline. If we fail to do that on a timely basis, even if later the CID does petition the qualified voters in the district and they agree to the new terms for the one percent sales tax, there's a very high likelihood, because of the state statutes, that the CID will miss at least one quarter of its collected sales tax to operate the district. At least one quarter. And if we delay longer, it could be a full half year lost of sales tax because of the requirements with the state. So why we can talk about the length of the CID, and we certainly have been working earnestly on, on the terms of the cooperation agreement. And I appreciate our city attorneys' work on that and also the work of the SID board on their side to come to terms on that. In the end, we've got to keep this timeline of the tax in front of us and grant at least the renewal of the CID so that they can now pursue the legal requirements to continue to collect the one percent sales tax and not place their budget and the trolley operations and everything else at great risk. Thank you.
Clay?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Do you have something to say?
Yeah, to simplify all of this, I believe Alderman LeBlanc has an amendment he'd like to suggest to the board so we can just simplify this and move it forward.
We're still in the public hearing.
We're still in the public hearing.
It has not been put on the floor yet.
But, yes, sir.
When it is, Ralph has something to say.
Okay. Ruth, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Vice Alderman Cooper, I do have comments, but I really would appreciate hearing from the public first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this? Steve?
Good evening, Mayor Protim, Vice President Cooper.
Man, this just gets better and better, don't it?
Members of the board, I'm Steve Hartley. My sister and I have Dicks Five and Ten in downtown Branson. And I'm once again standing in support of extending the term of the Historic Downtown Branson Community Improvement District. I've got a prepared statement here I'd like to read, please. Nearly twenty years ago, we saw the need for a trolley that would transport visitors between Branson Landing and Historic Downtown Branson. We formed the Historic Downtown Branson Community Improvement District and a one percent sales tax that was approved by the district's property owners to pay for the trolley. The tax was to be governed by a board of directors made up of downtown business and property owners. If we were going to tax ourselves, who better to ensure the most efficient use of the tax collected than downtown stakeholders? Now, nearly two decades later, the SID is still providing trolley service throughout the district. However, their effort has not stopped there. The SID has nearly doubled in size and has made fantastic impact on downtown. This includes providing a much-needed total remodel of the Aubrey Parking Lot Bathroom, providing beautiful custom snowflakes that hang on the lamppost throughout the holiday season, and making a two hundred thousand dollar contribution to the city for the purpose of installing overhead RGB LED lights on Main Street to make a wow statement. When we formed the SID nearly twenty years ago, we did not begin to dream that such impactful improvements could nor would be made to downtown. The enhancements that have been provided are what set downtown Branson apart and make it special and some of the reasons a myriad of people visit and revisit downtown every year. Without these funds, it is hard to see how the aforementioned could have occurred. We all recognize the need to stay current and continually evolve. And the use of the one percent sales tax is clearly what has and hopefully will continue to allow downtown improvements that would more than likely not happen otherwise. I give one hundred percent of the credit of the great enhancements to the visionary members of the SID board and the SID administrator, Chris Bohens. The board brings, brings with them many, many years of working downtown and a wealth of knowledge and a sincere desire to do what is best for the district. SID Administrator Chris Bohens is a former Ward Two alderman who served for ten years in this capacity. She has a great love for downtown and wants to see downtown and the greater district meet its true potential. The board, with Chris's direction, has proved to have forethought and fiscal prudence in managing our one percent sales tax. I have complete confidence in them. Tonight, please vote to extend the term of the Historic Downtown Branson Community Improvement District. Please also allow the SID board to have complete control of the way our one percent collected sales tax is used. It's the correct and best thing to do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Ooh. Mic drop. He just walks out as they clap. Look at that, man. That's nice. Anyone else in the audience? Any, okay, Ruth, you want to, go ahead.
Thank you.
Oh. Do you? Yeah. You want to, oh, you want to speak?
Well, yes, I have a presentation on behalf of the board of the district board.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, and thank you to those who took the time to meet with us to become more informed on, on this matter. Because of these meetings, I'll be able to speak with some brevity this evening. I'm also thankful for getting this on the agenda tonight because time is of the essence. Our, our SID expires in April of twenty-six, and even as this moves forward tonight, we still have to get on it, on a mail-in ballot, as stated by, by Mr. Schultz. So twenty years ago in two thousand and six, the businesses inside the historic district voted for a self-imposed one percent tax so that we could not only begin a transportation district, but a structure to market downtown and accomplish improvements within the district. In two thousand and fourteen, we doubled the district in size, but not in revenue. This was pre Chick-fil-A, CVS, Casey's, Dollar General, Whataburger, and some others. After the new developments within the district and after some cautionary budgeting during COVID, we began to experience surplus funds. Our first order of business was to purchase a new trolley to serve the new areas. After that was satisfied, we began to partner with the city to improve the historic district. Some of those partnerships included the Aubrey Bathroom remodel, the replacement and additions to the Christmas lights, replacement and maintenance of the landscaping, a thirty-five-foot Christmas tree in downtown, most recently a two hundred thousand dollar contribution to the lights, as well as many other smaller projects. With overwhelming support from the hundreds of businesses within the district, what we are asking for you, for, asking you to consider is a generous, what we are asking for you to consider is a generous financial commitment from our board to you so that you may provide enhanced services within the district. And it allows us to follow our desire to continue to work hand in hand with the city on projects that not only benefit the business within the district, but also the city. But most importantly, a more memorable experience for the millions of tourists whose first impression of Branson will be the downtown area. Our board asks you to amend the bill to substitute the new version of Exhibit A that has been signed by the district for the current Exhibit A. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Alderman Denham, you want to, is there anyone else in the audience? Go ahead, Ruth.
Thank you. Okay, um, just to recap, for those listening here or maybe online, who may not be aware of discussions to date. of discussions to date regarding the downtown CID's possible renewal, I offer the following. The Board of Aldermen, as a cohesive board, directed administration to move forward in discussions with the downtown CID board and provide the Board of Aldermen with updates. This took place at our executive meeting on June 10th. I received a text on July 19th from Carl, I'm sorry, Kyle Junk, VP of the Downtown Sid Board, asking me to meet with him to discuss the downtown Sid. I saw email correspondence between city admin and the downtown Sid. No surprise, city admin Kathy Step, as always, step ahead of us. She had already tried to get a meeting scheduled. No pun intended on that Kathy Step, but it's true. I followed up to see if any meetings had taken place thus far as directed by the entire Board of Aldermen. Kathy Step had requested meeting as directed, but the invitation was not accepted. I declined a meeting with Kyle as I had no intention of disregarding administrative process. So much to my surprise, I saw this ordinance amendment on the agenda before us tonight, and I contacted the city. There had been no meeting to resolve the extended term as directed by the Board of Aldermen. I was informed that Alderman Schultz and Lucas took it upon themselves to draft this amendment against the board's initial directive, met with our city attorney last Friday for four and a half hours. I feel it's extremely inappropriate and unprofessional to request staff to take direction from two aldermen versus the board, especially ignoring what was originally discussed at a Board of Aldermen meeting. I feel the board and administration has been undermined. I request that whether an amended document is approved tonight or not, the CID board and our city administration, as directed, schedule an appropriate meeting or meetings, however many are necessary, and that the downtown Sid board be prepared to provide the following information to admin to report back to us, the entire board. Align item budget. Number one, Market Branson. Who is Market Branson? I would like a complete breakdown of the advertising expenses such as TV, radio, print, anything else that's included in that. The vacation channel, is this an additional marketing service? What did they provide? Maybe commercials? What was spent and what was received in return? Destination Toolbox, what exactly was spent and what was received? The Downtown Branson Betterment Association is no longer included. When were they discontinued? What's the dollar amount that was left over and how was it spent? Executive Director, I was a little surprised, but no other Branson CID has an executive director, let alone one that is paid. So if you could also please provide information about the employment contract. Is this an annual salary? Does this include benefits, vehicle, everything that's included in the contract? The trolley agreement aspect, who owns the trolleys? Is the Sid purchasing and maintaining all the trolleys? Please provide a copy of the trolley contract. Were other companies provided the opportunity to bid for the trolleys? And lastly, please be prepared to explain what the meaning is of arms-length negotiations. I realize this is quite a bit of information to prepare, so I will forward my request to city administration in writing. I'm sure other board members have questions or requests, so I'll stop and I'll give them the opportunity to comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth. Anyone on the board want to comment? Huh? Go ahead.
Thank you, Clay. Ruth, I have not put together any amendments of any type, so I don't know where your information came from, but it's wrong.
I apologize. Okay, I apologize. I guess it was just done by Alderman Schultz, but it was my understanding that you both attended a meeting with our city attorney for four and a half hours on Friday. So I apologize if I stated that you helped draft it. My apologies.
I did, I did meet with Solan and Glenn for, how long was I there? Hour and a half, maybe, at most.
Alderman Lucas left early.
Okay, thank you. I apologize if I stated that you helped to draft it. I guess it was just done by Alderman Schultz, but thank you very much.
Anyone else? Before we exit the public hearing? Mayor, you have anything to add? Are you good for now?
Good for now, thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Public hearing is now closed. You've heard the first reading of Bill.
I have a motion.
Alderman LeBlanc has a motion.
We need to get it on the floor first.
Let's get it on the floor, okay. You've heard of the first reading of Bill number 6588. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
Second.
Motion and a second. Alderman LeBlanc?
Chairman, yes. I move to amend the ordinance and the cooperative agreement to reflect a three-year renewal term for the downtown Sid with all other provisions in the contract remaining the
You have that, Hillary? Madam Clerk?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion about the amendment, or are we?
Yeah. So the reason I submitted this motion is, you know, collectively, this board is not looking to by any means change the Sid, any drastic measures whatsoever. I don't know, it seems there's a lot of buzz on the street that we're trying to end the trolley, do all these things, and that's never been a conversation that this board has had. The one thing that we have collectively all agreed upon is that our city administrator and staff are the negotiating partners in this agreement. And so as a result, the reason I recommended a three-year renewal on this, for this term was, one of the reasons that we kind of wanted to, I guess, look at the cooperative agreement is because coming up, we have more businesses within the Sid that are going to generate revenue. And no one is, knows what that, what's going to happen. This three-year term gives us an opportunity to look at what revenue will be generated over that time and gives this Sid an opportunity to dream bigger than it's ever dreamed before. Because the revenue that it's created up to this point has been, I think, far and above what the originators of the Sid 20 years ago ever expected. You know, I think initially, the Sid was developed because of the downtown landing and an attempt to shuttle people to old downtown so that we would not cannibalize the downtown area with the landing. And that has since been achieved, and that Sid has been expanded because of the popularity of the trolley, because of the amount of businesses that have come in. And as we continue to grow economically, this is a great opportunity for your Sid board, as Kyle mentioned, to dream better than they've ever dreamed, or bigger than they've ever dreamed before. And I think this three-year term gives us an opportunity to really get this cooperative agreement where it is a win-win deal for the city and win-win for the CID and the downtown businesses. So that is the reason that I made this motion to extend this Sid for three years so that we can look at all those things and get those things in place and look at the longevity that they do have beyond that.
Alderman, if I could just give you a suggestion on your motion, in order for us to do that, we would have to amend the language of the cooperative agreement and the ordinance, so the motion would need to say something to that effect.
Yeah, I move to amend the ordinance and cooperative agreement contract.
To reflect?
To reflect a three-year renewal term for the downtown Sid with all other provisions in the cooperative agreement remaining the same.
I think that would be, that would probably be the sufficient motion to change what you're, it sounds like you're wanting to do.
Yeah.
Alderman Schultz?
Yeah, first, just a question on the amendment. Are you saying the cooperative agreement that's in the current bill or the existing cooperative agreement?
The cooperative agreement in the current bill.
The current bill, okay. So I appreciate the amendment and the intent. What concerns me about this, from my research, is this effectively makes the CID go out to the voters for a three-year tax renewal. And we know from the city's perspective that we normally try to go out for the longest renewal term possible because if you keep pestering the voters to get your tax approved, you keep running the chance, the more you do it, the less likely it's going to get approved, not to mention the expense and general hassles of that entire process. So I think the 10-year agreement that was struck during the conversations instead of the original 20-year is a fair compromise to that, to provide the tax. And then it also allows the CID and its, to consider any amendments to the cooperative agreement, it can work with the city on it during that time. And the other factor that we would just have to include in that was, you know, any changes to the scope of the Sid, in other words, to the actual original petition of the Sid, has got nothing to do with the alderman, or very little to do with the alderman per se, and very little to do with the CID board itself. That petition has to come from the property owners within the district, both 50% by tax and 50% by population. And so, you know, thoughts about expanding the Sid are great. I think those are great conversations to have, but it's really not in the control of that group. It requires an outright marketing campaign to the businesses to change its scope and to get a new petition in front of the aldermen, amended petition in front of the aldermen, or it's going to require the businesses on their own initiative to say that they'd like the Sid to take on additional scope. So that's why, just in the way of background, those weren't included in the initial proposals because they aren't very sound from a tax collection perspective and just a general process with the Sid. So I sincerely appreciate the amendment, but because of the short time of three years, I wouldn't be in favor of it.
Well, I kind of beg to differ. I think when you extend it longer than that three years, you get a degree of complacency that sets in where, you know, the negotiation factor with the cooperative agreement tends to fall by the wayside. I think the three-year extension gives us an opportunity to keep this top of mind. And, yeah, the added expense of going out to vote and things like that, it's not like we're talking about a huge voting population. I think initially, there were six votes, four for and two against when the initial Sid was developed, so we're not talking about a whole lot of voters. This is the only Sid that does have a director that is paid, so I think it would fall within the purview of administratively for that to occur. So I'm still very comfortable with the three-year extension. I would look beyond that to, you know, not be of advice.
Clay?
Mayor, yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
I agree with Ralph, and Glenn, I think you're making a mountain out of this. When you say a campaign for the vote, if I'm not mistaken, there are 26 residents, voters, to vote on this issue. So I don't know that we're talking about a lengthy, expensive election campaign to try to get the voters to approve this tax increase for three years.
Yeah, I didn't mean a campaign to the qualified voters because obviously that's not allowed. I was talking about a campaign to the property owners if we were to change the scope of the Sid, where they'd have to submit a revised petition to the alderman to do that. Personally, I just, I think there's high risk here. This is not something that if this were a city tax, I can't imagine a single alderman saying, oh, let's just go out to the voters for a three-year approval and we'll come back after that and try to get another approval. We would never risk that from the city perspective. And to put the CID in that position, I think, is not well-advised. I think we have the potential that if the voters were to turn it down on renewal, the board would have a lot of egg on its face as it loses the trolley service downtown.
Again, Glenn, you're talking about going to the entire population of Branson versus 26 voters. You mentioned yourself, timing is important. Timing is of the essence. In trying to, instead of trying to squabble out the differences of making changes, I think Ralph's suggestion is to keep this intact, to take the most prominent, prominent action tonight to keep this going, is to keep it written as it is and extend it for three years.
Gal, you want to say something? Yeah.
Gail Meyer, 365 Whisper Ridge. So I love my downtown. You know, and the, so what do we have? How many businesses do we have down there that are working together? How many?
They might, Chris might can answer that.
How many businesses downtown do we have that are working together in the CID?
Clay, during this session, the question needs to be asked directly to the presiding commissioner.
Okay. Well, so she said 400 businesses.
400?
Yeah, that's what she said. So, and property owners. Okay, so you've got 400 businesses that have worked together for 20 years, and they are a separate political subdivision, okay? So what I've heard is you all act like it belongs to you, and the only thing that you have to do is approve the renewal and approve their budget. It doesn't belong to you. In fact, they don't need you, okay? They don't need you at all. All they need is the approval. I have no idea why would we would not approve them for another 20 years. I don't know what's going to happen in three years, okay? You guys said that they were fiscally sound. You said that they're working together. They're giving you money that you don't, probably maybe not deserve, their marketing, and don't act like the CID belongs to you. All that would be is big government, that would be power and control, and gosh, it's totally out of character for you all. We have core values in this community, right? We have core values. Well, the second part of that is character, okay? You've got to apply the character. Instead, you should be encouraging them as opposed to somehow restricting them because truly, they do not, they do not need you, not one iota. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you keep decorum in the chambers, please.
Do you have something, Ruth? Oh.
Mr. Gorman, were you gonna?
Go ahead, Gary.
Agreeing with everything that has been said tonight. Sid is great. They provide, they provide a good service, although quite frankly, I think anybody with half an ounce of brains would question the trolley service, but that, let that just go, let, just let that go. Everything else, let's take it at face value. That being the case, what's the harm in extending it for three years as versus 10 years or 20 years? Three years will give us a chance for the, for the city to resolve their issues, and somehow I cannot picture that the city administrator would be sending a letter out and getting staff involved and spending four hours trying, trying to come up with an agreement if the city didn't have any interest in it or any business in it. That's just tripe. Folks, two, three years? The city administrator, I've heard, well, we've been trying for years to get things resolved. All I know is I saw a letter that was dated July, signed by the city administrator that had, that had quite a, quite a lot of detail in it. She requested a meeting. Now, if I had been working with the city for three years and I finally got the city administrator's attention, by golly, I'm going to go. And it was disrespectful not to go, and that's why we're in this situation. If, if they had set up the meeting and gone, I think we'd be having a different discussion tonight, but I think three years gives us plenty of time to get it resolved, and then hopefully, once, once it's resolved this time- once, once it's resolved this time, that, that will take care of it.
Did you have something already?
Anybody else on the board?
Anybody in the audience? Kyle?
I'll comment on that last statement concerning...
Yeah, yeah, a little closer.
Can I get a professional to show me how? Let me respond to the previous comment about why I did not take the meeting. At the time, yeah, I've met with some of you aldermen and some of you know my background. You know, I have a restaurant in town. I kind of lucked into being the guy that gets to speak to you guys tonight because I volunteered to be vice president at some point in the board. And so when the, the request was made of me to meet, it was after there had been two verbal accusations and two written accusations that we were doing illegal things within our board. I am not a lawyer. I barely understood who worked for who or how the city administration even worked four months ago. So I declined that meeting solely because there was a discord, there seemed to be the discussion of, are we doing something legal? Are we doing something illegal? Are we not doing something that we're allowed to do? Are we doing something that we are allowed to do? And until that question was settled, and now it's been settled, that yes, everything we're doing is fine and we're doing fine all along, you know, until that was settled, I didn't feel comfortable taking that meeting because I didn't feel like I was the person to talk to. It was the two attorneys that needed to talk. And that, and that's my response of why it was respectfully declined at that time.
Solon, could you, because we heard Gail and Gary's comments, could you clarify the role of the city and the CID, the relationship and how that blends together?
Sure. So the city absolutely has an interest and control over the existence of the CID. If it wasn't for the city's vote, the CID would not exist. So they have to get the approval of the city. I don't want that, that was not a true statement, but it may be just been inadvertent or just didn't, no. These things, there's a, there's a body of statutes that govern these, and I don't expect anyone that's not a lawyer to understand them, so I'm more than happy to share that. The other thing that I think would be helpful is to kind of know the structure of the Cids. And we tried to go over this in a, in a public meeting with the CID, but I was denied the ability to take questions in that meeting. I was able to comment, but I was denied the ability to take questions, which was unfortunate because I felt like it was, it would have been helpful and maybe prevented some of this. But I just want to say, in the CID petition, so the CID, the board approves the CID, the petition is kind of like the governing document and as well as the statutes of the state of Missouri governing Cids. And in the petition, it outlines what a CID can and cannot do. This particular CID has very limited powers compared to what other Cids in the city can do. And those powers are pretty much limited to funding, using the sales tax revenue to fund transportation-related items, okay? So the only thing outside of funding the trolley that the CID actually can spend its revenues on is matters related to those transportation items, such as the trolley. So it's got to have some nexus or connection to the trolley. The lights, sure. Christmas trees, I'm not going to comment. So the concern, I think, was that we would like the CID to expand those powers so that we didn't have any questions in our minds. And so the city's role is to oversee those kinds of things and determine whether or not a CID should continue in the existing form that it's in. So if this, if the board of aldermen decide that they would like the CID to be more broad in its powers, that's their prerogative, they can vote that way. Now, tonight, what we're hearing is that they're okay with the CID board continuing with its current powers, but that maybe they want to review that in a few years. As has been proposed, that's, there, with the caveat of the 9% that we talked about earlier in the staff report and the three-year term and the cap, the CID would still, we're not changing the petition, it's still limited to spending funds on the transportation-related things. And, and, and anything else has to be connected to those transportation-related things. So in other Cids, they can spend money on various other things. It just depends on what their petition says. Most of them say they want the power to spend the sales tax revenues on anything the law allows. This CID does not say that. This is a very limited revenue-spending CID. And so the CID is going to have to be careful about that. And I think it's a valid point for the board to have oversight of that, and I think there's been lots of input from all the aldermen. And so just to clarify in conclusion, this, the board of aldermen does have an oversight role because they actually decide whether or not the CID exists at all. And, and, and one final point would be, you know, they are the representatives of the people. The people voted them in. So I just want to say that.
Thank you, Sol. Did you have something, Kathy?
Thank you. You know, I just want to say how disappointed I was in how this all got shaken out to bring us here this evening. I've never had the opportunity to have a conversation with the CID board. Chris, you and I haven't had an opportunity to sit down and talk about this. And to say, Kyle, that it was because you were being accused of doing things illegal and that's, I'm assuming that's why you're saying you had to send a formal letter back instead of just picking up the phone and calling me? I mean, this is Branson. And we're supposed to be all rowing in the same direction, and I don't believe I've had, committed any action that would give the impression of otherwise. I've never accused the CID of doing anything illegal or immoral. We've been delighted with the support and help that we've received from your, your group, very delighted and very thankful for that. So I think a lot could have been solved with just a simple phone call, just picking, I mean, I've just, I'm like, I can't believe that no one's willing to sit down and talk with me about this. And so that's what makes me sad about this. It doesn't have to be like that, and the door is still wide open. So whatever happens tonight, I want the opportunity to sit down and have the conversation. I don't understand why they're shaking heads because I'm speaking the God's honest truth here to you tonight. I've never had the audience. So I would love that opportunity. And I'm hopeful you can see by my past work over the last nearly three years and being in this job, is that is the way I conduct business here in the city. And that's to sit down and collaborate and coordinate with the people most affected by the decisions that are made here in City Hall. And it's our job to lift you up and to help you be more successful. And if that means giving you some suggestions and you can take them or not, but having a conversation about how maybe to beef up the language or to expand the language to allow you to do even more than you've ever imagined you could do 20 years ago, you never imagined it, then let's do that together. And we can start tomorrow. So the door's open.
Ruth?
Thank you. I just want to state, I love my downtown. I love this city. I have served it in many different ways for a very long time. I also love transparency and accountability. Mayor Protem, we have a motion and an amendment on the floor, and I call for the question, please.
Question's been called? We're voting on the amendment, correct?
You first have to vote on calling the question, and you need a two-thirds vote for approval.
That is correct.
Okay. So we have a motion for the call for the question?
In a second.
Yeah. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
In a second? Now we're going to vote on, okay, I got you. Are we doing a roll call?
Roll call, okay. Lucas?
No.
Cooper?
I'm going to say no.
Denham?
Yes.
LeBlanc?
Yes.
Schultz?
No.
So the result of the vote is three noes, two yeses, then call the question, motion fails.
Well, I just feel like...
Yeah, that's the same thing I was going to say, is we've got people that apparently want to talk.
I don't want to squash them from having input, so, did you, go ahead, Kyle.
I would just like to respond back to you, Ms. Step, and I do appreciate your passion, and I also am passionate. I have a responsibility to represent the businesses for the board I serve, so I can understand that you have that same responsibility, have the same passion that I have. But I have a letter dated July 25th from you, and additional granting broad CID powers will help minimize inadvertent unlawful expenditures. That's what you wrote to me.
Right, that's not saying... Again, I stand on the comments I made previously, Kyle, which is, we want to make sure that if someone else were to interpret the expenditures differently, that that wouldn't get the CID sideways, right? That you wouldn't be in some kind of trouble and therefore, by nexus or oversight, the city being in trouble for not, you know, making sure that the expenditures were appropriate. So that's all I was saying.
I understand.
I wasn't accusing you guys of anything.
It sounds a little accusatory, but it, it, then reading that sentence, I'm like, this is, this is a job for lawyers, not for a hamburger.
Yeah.
So, you know, that, that, that's what I'm referring to.
I appreciate.
If you, you did not outright say, we're breaking the law.
No.
Inadvertent unlawful expenditures, sounds important to me.
Right.
Let the lawyers handle that.
Understood, Kyle. Thank you very much.
Was this Jim wanting to speak or is he just?
Good evening. My name is Greg Dormand, I'm the attorney for the downtown CID, and I just appreciate to have a chance to talk to you about this and just try to offer some clarifying comments. I agree with Mr. McGee that the city, of course, has oversight role and involvement of any CID within its boundaries, so I don't, I disagree with the speaker earlier that said that we don't need you, et cetera. The goal of my client, the CID board, has been to find a way to productively work with the city and, and plan for the future. And it was, it has run into serious concerns over the timing. Submitted a very simple proposed version of a cooperative agreement in February and then had a public meeting with city staff at, on April 2nd. And Ms. Step, I don't know if you weren't available for that meeting, but that was an opportunity to meet with the board directly. Then the, after that meeting, submitted a version of a cooperative agreement. The response from the city administration was there just weren't, the city was not going to have time to respond to that agreement substantively for months. And we were trying to be in a position to get the, a sales tax initiative out on, for a mail-in ballot. So then the CID withdrew that request that you had first read back in March, I believe it was, for the 20-year extension, withdrew it, held a public meeting on May 29th. Yes, at that meeting, the, the chair of the meeting, who's not the usual chair of the CID board because he's your municipal judge, but Mr. Junk is, you know, ably running that meeting, allowed comment from Mr. McGee and did not allow a question-and-answer dialogue. I don't think you all would allow me to turn around and start a question-and-answer dialogue with the audience at one of your meetings. So there's no disrespect intended, but it's simply a matter of maintaining decorum at a public meeting when that went on for a couple hours, as I recall, with a number of public speakers. After that meeting, the, the, again, submitted a third version of a proposed cooperative agreement at this point, trying to just go as, as far as they could into what the, to accomplish what the city staff had, had communicated the city was interested in. Submitted that in June, didn't get any substantive detailed response on that agreement either, and then did, and then got Ms. Step's letter dated July 25th. So I just tried to clarify the timeline a little. I do, and, and finally then, I'm not trying to sort of litigate the past or anything, but I, I have serious concerns about what the CID board will choose to do. Legally, it is entirely the CID board's decision whether to seek to renew this sales tax. And renew is just a term of art, really. This sales tax ends April, well, the CID ends in April of 2026, the sales tax is tied to that under the, under the documents. So it really is going to the voters of the district and asking to implement a 1% sales tax for a new period of time. And so it's the same procedure as, as a new sales tax. And they just would like to have the time to be able to do that. A three-year extension, I don't know, obviously, what my client will choose to do, but they may choose not to do that. So thought it might be helpful to try to be clear about that at this, at this meeting. And certainly, I'm available to answer any questions you have. I have given a letter in writing to the city offering my legal opinion that the CID's expenditures are all perfectly valid. I disagree with Mr. McGee on how limited the CID's powers are. What the CID can do and what the CID should do, I think, are concepts that have gotten intermingled in some of these discussions. The legal authority is broader, and you have a board who, when they first started talking to the city, and if I misrepresent what any of you all, you know, think, then please come up after me and correct me. But they were, they were there to run the trolleys. They understood that was the mission of, of the downtown business and property owners that they wanted to, based on the original petition. So they were resistant to considering other options, even though they might be legally available. I think the discussions with the city have led them to expand that and realize, okay, if we're going to talk about a 20-year extension, which is what they were originally after, that the purposes should be, that you're allowed to grow, but under the existing petition it can be done. There are certain things you can't do under the existing petition, but when you really look at the petition in detail, the most limiting sort of things tying it to specific transportation services are in the attachments, which are part of a five-year plan, and they all have non-inclusive lists. So it's not really a limitation. The limitation, there is one limitation that's very clear, and that's the 1% sales tax is the only revenue source this, it is allowed unless the Branson Board of Aldermen approves another form of sales tax. And it's also, now, lost my train of thought at the end, but again, from the, from the CID board's perspective, they've tried to be open to those things to be able to work and partner with the city on a greater variety of measures in the future within the scope of its lawful authority, which because of the, the breadth of it, does not necessarily need the massive undertaking of amending a CID petition for a large district like this one. So I'll just close on a final note. I work with a variety of communities across the state. I know you all are very familiar with like Joe Lauer and his firm. That's my, my, my firm is an equivalent business model on the other side of the state. My founding partners, they like, like to say they thought of it first, and we represent local governmental entities exclusively. Cids in cities obviously have to work together, and none of the great things that have happened because of the, that have been talked about tonight that I won't repeat would be possible without that kind of a partnership. So I understand that, that priority. And again, I'd be glad to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you, sir. Solon?
Yeah, I just want to, yeah, and Greg, I appreciate your comments. Obviously, Greg and I have differing opinions on the, some of the legal issues here, but I just want to clarify for the public that's here, the communications that have gone on. You heard a timeline from Greg about communications that the city received. I received, I sent an email to, and these are the emails that I sent to Mr. Dormand. I sent an email on April 4th. I sent, I sent three, two emails on April 4th. I sent another one on April 14th, April 28th, May 5th, May 6th, May 7th, another on May 7th, another on May 7th, another on May 7th, May 13th, another on May 13th, May 13th, May 19th, May 27th, June 11th, June 11th, June 11th. And then I was on a family vacation during July for some of the July, so maybe it wasn't as productive, August 8, August 11th, and August 21st, August 22nd. And then, as Greg can attest, we were in communications over the weekend, late night hours, away from family, working on these things to try to get some kind of a understanding. It has been unfortunate that we haven't been able to have better communication, even though we have had communication. So I want it to be clear that the city has... So I want it to be clear that the city has been actively engaged. And that's just the emails I've sent to Greg. Obviously, the city has sent, you know, letters, as you guys have all heard tonight, but I just wanted to make it clear that, that we have been engaged with them throughout this process.
Thank you. I, I, I mean, we could sit here all night and talk about he said, she said, you know, who's got their panties in a wad, but none of it's going to do any good, right? I mean, it's not healthy. And I mean, the bottom line is, we want the CID, they want the CID. Nobody does not want the CID, you know? I think, I think now we're all, it's all about the term or the length of the CID, right? So, I mean, and again, I feel like this was kind of, if we had had another couple of weeks, or if this, if the timeline would have been, if we had more time to get this ready, I don't think we'd even be discussing the three-year amendment right now. But I feel like it's kind of, with all this turmoil that's happened, and, and all of a sudden it's on the agenda, like, okay, what's, you know? I don't know, I just, I don't know, I just wanted to say that. Glenn?
Yeah, I was, I was going to say something, but I don't think it'll be productive at this point. The other thing I think we've just, we've really got to keep in mind is this issue. We're not just renewing the CID, we're talking about their tax. And I am truly concerned that when you go back to voters at that kind of pace and say, "Please reapprove tax, please reapprove tax," that's a very dangerous thing to do. While I appreciate the intent of the amendment, I just think it's irresponsible as it relates to the tax itself, which is not part of that amendment, but is a result of that amendment.
Recall for the question.
We have one lady right here.
Ronnie Hastings again. So I just have a question, clarifying question again. The CID originally, I think, said they initiated the renewal question in February last year? Last April, was it? 15 months ago. And that's in order to get a tax to be renewed April of '26. So you're talking about a two-year discussion and process to renew the CID. And now you're saying, "We will renew it for three years," which means that in 10 months' time, you will be sitting here again, starting the process all over again to do the same thing. That doesn't sound like very good use of any of our money or your time. I don't understand honestly what three years does, except to minimize the risk that you're not going to be buying in or approving something that you're not going to be comfortable with to last 10 years. Because saying you're only going to do it for three years seems like it makes absolutely no sense at all, if it takes literally two years to go through the process. Now, if you're not comfortable with the existing petition, or you're not comfortable with the collaborative agreement, and I was at that public meeting, so I know there were a lot of disagreements about what was in the original collaborative agreement and what the city wanted to add to the collaborative agreement, and hopefully you've made more progress since then. Can't you renew it for 10 years and then still say that that collaborative agreement can be tweaked as you have it in place for the petition and for the tax increase? And the details is really where the devil is of what that money goes for. They had $200,000 extra dollars and decided with the city's cooperation that wasn't in the collaborative agreement to buy new lights? I mean, can't that always happen as part of that during that 10 years, if you approved it for 10 years?
I don't know.
That's my question.
I don't know that answer, ma'am.
Can you continue to work that collaborative agreement or what that's going, the money from the CID, the excess money, is used for?
From a historical perspective, we've already modified once, or the CID requested one modification already in the past of the cooperative agreement. And the very nature, the structure of the cooperative agreement encourages future modifications as they're needed.
Okay. So again, I will just comment that saying a three-year extension makes no sense whatsoever in, in any way, shape, or form.
And just as a point of clarification, it doesn't actually take two years to negotiate one. If we had good communication and we all were just willing to sit down at the table, we could do it in a week.
All right, let's vote.
Point of order, can we just clarify what we're voting on?
Madam Clerk?
I just, Alderman LeBlanc does it so well. He's got it, and his voice is better and everything.
I move to amend the ordinance and the cooperative agreement contract to reflect the three-year renewal term for the downtown CID, with all other provisions remaining the same.
Thank you.
Got you. Are we doing a roll call?
We can. Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's already on the floor.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Lucas?
No.
Cooper?
Yes.
Denim?
Yes.
LeBlanc?
Yes.
Schultz?
No.
Okay, so the result of the vote is two noes and three yeses. The motion carries.
Point of order?
Yes, Glenn.
Passing of bills in the state of Missouri require a majority of all aldermen, not aldermen present. If we're not, you know, if we're going to amend this and then it'll fail because we won't have a majority, and I, I just, I want to point it out before we take final votes, so that we don't inadvertently now leave our valued CID with no renewal and no chance of renewing their tax. It's a dangerous position to be in.
Solon?
I'm not going to give legal advice on, on the fly in front of a public body. That's not the appropriate place to do that. If we wanted to move into a closed session, if we were noticed for that, I would be more than happy to do that, but I'm not going to do that here in this meeting.
Madam Clerk? Glenn, say it again. Say what you said.
The, the state statutes require that bills passed by aldermen in a fourth-class city must be passed by a majority of the aldermen, not the aldermen present. It's very clear.
Wow.
No, you have to have a majority, so you would have to have.
You're saying you have to have at least four?
At least four votes to pass a bill in favor, regardless of the attendance at the alderman meeting.
I always understood that to be on the final read, but...
Okay, let's, can we recess into, closing, or just recess?
And I'd also like to just point out, as a matter of procedure, so that I don't surprise anybody, since we're, we've kind of run out the clock for them in terms of renewing their tax, I'll ask for a double reading tonight.
The clock has not run out. You have until August, September 26th.
So how can we get in this room and talk about this? Legally?
Excuse me.
Yes, Mayor.
Glenn, for clarity, what you're stating, is that for a second and final read? Or is what you're stating for a first read?
It says to pass a bill, so I would assume most likely that's the second read.
Is this just the first read?
Yeah, although, as I just stated, for full disclosure, my intent is to ask for a second read because we've, because, because we've nearly run out the clock on the CID in terms of their tax renewal process.
What we've done tonight is it's passed on its first read. We do not have all aldermen present, so a second read would not, no. Well, I guess we could have a second read and see what happens.
Well, it'll fail.
But let's try.
Based off what he's saying.
So maybe we have, Clay, maybe you have this call for, I mean, have the second read and see what the vote is. And if there's not enough votes to pass it, then it won't pass tonight on the second read.
And to be clear, there is time to do a second read at a subsequent board of alderman meeting.
Okay.
So maybe we don't want to have the second, the second read, because Glenn's tactic is if it doesn't pass on the second read tonight, then it's dead in the water, so...
Okay, so the bill, the bill's approved.
Yeah.
The, the amendment.
I mean, the amendment's approved, right? So now we're going to vote on the bill as amended?
That's correct.
First read?
That's right.
We doing a roll call?
Sure.
Okay.
Lucas?
No.
Cooper?
Yes.
Denim?
Yes.
LeBlanc?
Yes.
Schultz?
Abstain.
Do you have a legal reason to abstain, Glenn?
Yes, I just abstained.
Do you have a legal reason to abstain, Glenn? My understanding from state statute, Glenn, is we are bound to vote unless there's a legal reason to abstain. So what's your legal reason, Glenn?
That's what I was...
Okay, Clay, you're back in charge.
Kathy's talking with Solon for a second. Yeah, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. Huh?
Stand at ease. This would be when you, it's fine, recess is fine.
What do you want me to call it?
She was saying stand at ease.
Oh, we're going to stand at ease.
Stand at ease.
All right, we're back. Yeah, so, Al, do you want to read the statute? Or comment, I'm sorry.
Sure, and the thing that I think we want to probably take into account as a caveat is the statute cited by Alderman Schultz has been ruled by a court as unconstitutional, but I need to look into what section of that. And so, either way, that does not affect the analysis tonight because this is a first read, and so, if that statute in the part that Alderman Schultz quotes affects a final passage, then we would want to take that into account. But, you know, the question still remains, and we'll find this out before the next vote, whether or not that statute would apply, and if we need to have more votes, then that's the board's prerogative and needs to figure that out.
Were you able to, in that time, find out about my ability to abstain?
Abstentions are typically done where there's conflicts of interest. Board members do have a duty to vote in on matters, yea or nay.
So, the bill is passed as amended. Is that where we're at?
Correct. The result of the vote, as stated, was Alderman Lucas voting no, Alderman Cooper Denham Lucas yes, and Alderman Schultz was an abstention.
Yeah, so it's passed as amended, correct?
I'm sorry, Alderman Lucas was saying something.
Do you have something to say already? Do it in the mic.
I voted no.
I said that, yeah. I have that.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Well, that's the bill. The bill's passed, yeah, as amended. All right, are we to report? Alderman Schultz goes first.
Keep mixing up those orders.
Well, that's just what my papers say.
Okay, just a couple of things, really kind of some repeats from last week. Liberty testimony for Liberty Utilities rate increase still continues. I think we have until the beginning of October, if I remember correctly, but all the material that Liberty distributed on that had bad links on it, if you care to do that, and I put it up on my website. I don't know if the city has posted it there yet. Otherwise, it's up on my website, schultzforbranson.com. The CERT training that's put on by the City of Branson, September 5th, 6th, and 20th, is on the city website. There are still some spots available. I was just talking with chief about that. So, if you go to the news section in there and scroll down a little bit, you'll find how you can sign up for the CERT, or since our chief is sitting right here, I'm sure he'd be happy to talk with you if somebody in the room here has an interest in doing that. And CERT is Community Emergency Response Team, and so it's a great way to learn some basic first aid skills, some community response skills and things to help out your community. And then the last thing is, I haven't seen a finance committee meeting scheduled. My inclination is if we can't get a finance committee scheduled, that we should probably start adding some of their topics to our agenda, since they're supposed to advise us, and it's not happening. Maybe there's an update on that, but I was looking on the city site, and I couldn't find anything in terms of a finance committee meeting. So, that's it for me.
Alderman LeBlanc.
Report for me. Super excited about the Blue Angels being in town this weekend. That's going to be a, you know, great thing for the community, great thing. Plan on taking my little grandson out there, the 11-year-old. He's the one that can handle it. The others will run around too much, so I'm super excited about that. I think he's really excited. And beyond that, you know, I think, you know, irregardless of the conversation tonight, you know, this city is moving in a direction that is very, very positive, and it continues to make leaps and bounds strides to be better and better each time we have a meeting and each time we collaborate. So, you know, as Kathy mentioned, communication is of the utmost importance. It's one of the things I ran on when I initially ran, was communication, that it was very important on both sides of an issue that we have communication, because, you know, I think our community's loving enough and caring enough that we can sit across the table from each other and have conversations, albeit sometimes they get a little tough, but I think that's the level of respect that we bring to each other, and as long as we keep showing up, we're going to continue to make great strides in our community. So, I'm very happy with the direction we're going, and I think this community as a whole is, again, sky's the limit, and everything's moving in the right direction. So, that's my report.
Alderman Denham.
What about that national anthem? That was amazing. We are blessed to be able to have that here in our council chambers. Just hats off, much respect for those serving and our veterans, Alderman LeBlanc, Alderman Lucas, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you for what you do for this country and what you've done for this country. I just, after listening to comments tonight, I have a thought about process, because there's currently an ordinance which requires two aldermen to place an item on the agenda for discussion by the entire Board of Aldermen. However, I don't feel that the process for this type of request has really been fully explained. It became evident when the meeting of July 22nd, 2025, Alderman Schultz took it upon himself to form a committee of himself. Alderman Howden, who was definitely surprised by learning at the last minute, and we're talking 5:59, 59 that night, pretty much, and our city attorney. Discussion took place, and Alderman LeBlanc pointed out that Ward Three had been left out. So, then Alderman Schultz decided to add Alderman LeBlanc. Thank you, Alderman LeBlanc, for doing that. But in a nutshell, the ordinance that was sent to committee is how our mayor runs the board meetings. Watching the meeting, it appears that this came out of left field. You can go back for yourself, watch the facial expressions, and listen to the comments that were made at that meeting. Not only was Ward Three left out, but three aldermen were left out. We do not individually make decisions for this city or for the board. We are all one-sixth, one-sixth of the decision-making process, with an amazing mayor and administration and staff who care more about this city and residents than I have seen since 1994, when I moved here and became involved with the city. A question I have is, why wasn't this change recommended maybe at a study session? That would have made more sense, as the complete board and our city residents could attend a public meeting. Doing it this way is called being transparent, which is one of the hugest things that I ran on, is being transparent, having integrity, and letting our residents know what's going on. The proposed changes, in case the public's not aware, in essence undermines our mayor's ability to run meetings how he feels appropriate. It is one of the mayor's responsibilities to run this meeting. That's a huge responsibility of our mayor. I think he does an amazing job. This type of amendment should include all the Board of Aldermen, members of the general public as well. Referring to committee, which is the motion that was made, usually is a request for our community to become involved, not handpicked aldermen or putting a city attorney in a very precarious position. I have some suggestions, don't know how it'll fly, but Alderman Schultz, maybe, to consider reevaluating your request, maybe a reversal and take it to a study session. Another one, which I would hate to see, but I totally believe in transparency in this city, Alderman LeBlanc and Alderman Howden maybe reconsider even serving on this committee that undermines the rest of the board and our general public. I will be reaching out for a second to place an item on the agenda to create guidelines which will assist in including all aldermen when there is a request to amend an ordinance, to include staff and admin, most importantly, include our community. Our discussions need to be open, they need to be in a meeting, and they need to be in a meeting that's regularly scheduled to where, people work, people have lives, people do all kinds of things, but they know when we have our meeting. So, if we could assist our public in having these open meetings where discussion takes place, I would greatly appreciate that. That's called integrity and transparency. I love this board. I love working with everyone. We can agree to disagree, but going out and making decisions on our own as one alderman is, I don't think it's a fair thing to do, and it shouldn't be taking place. Thank you.
Alderman Lucas. Would you like to speak? Push your button.
Rumor and innuendo can kill a group, and I don't care if that's a group of schoolteachers, if it's a group of doctors and nurses, or if it's the city board. And I think that, I appreciate what Ruth said, we all are all to work together, but it's always been my position that if I have a problem with somebody, I'll go to them and talk to them about it. You know, it's not something that I want to hear something about me second or third hand. That's not the like, the way I like to do things. And so, transparency, I'm all for it, all for it, and working together as a board, all for it, but we're going to have disagreements, and we're going to have different situations and issues that come up, and I was, I feel, elected to this board to represent my constituents, and I don't ever, in any of the positions that I've been elected to, I don't ever feel that I was put there to get reelected. I was put there to do what was right, and that's what I try to do. And I'm going to continue to do things the way that I do them. That's me, and we have the right to agree to disagree agreeably, you know? We all have a right to be wrong, and I can't help it if I'm always right, no. But, seriously, I want to work together with everybody, but I just feel that there were some things that I have been in meetings this last few weeks where it seems like there was just one particular issue that everybody got hung up on, and it was how much money Krisbohink made every year. Everybody kept saying, "She makes $70,000 a year." No, she doesn't. She doesn't make anywhere near that, not even half of that. So, I think that if we're going to discuss issues like that, we should get the facts first. Love y'all.
Well, I too ran to represent the constituents. I mean, that's why, I never wanted to be a, I mean, I didn't want to be a politician. I mean, huh? No, I'm just saying, I mean, that's the, I came to all the meetings during COVID and got involved, and that's the reason I got into this. So, I don't, I don't do this to get reelected, or I don't look for, you know, I don't look to say the right things so that people will vote me back in, you know? I hate that it all went down like this, but sometimes, you know, it does, and it doesn't mean that we won't go back there and hug each other, and, I mean, I ain't hugging you, but anyhow, I mean, things like this happen. This was, this was an intense night, and it's not always like this. It's just, you know, for people that doesn't come to, some people may have their, for the first meeting going, "Boy, these people, ooh, they hate each other." But it's not true. I don't, I mean, I don't hate nobody. I don't think anybody hates each other. It's just, we all have opinions, and that's what makes a board, is everybody has an opinion, and the most, whoever gets the most votes on those opinions, that's how we move on. So, just part of the process.
Kathy?
Well, I think we need to bring the tempo up a little bit here. First thing is just to remind everybody that's here for the downtown SED. I look very much forward to having more conversations in the upcoming weeks. I think we can actually put something together that could be really something we can stand and link arm-in-arm at our next board meeting, so I'm very encouraged about that. And I also don't want it to get forgotten that this board has just passed the most significant economic development package to come to Branson since the landings. That is a big, big night for our community, and I want to give much appreciation to, in advance, in some part, to my staff, who's going to be very, very busy over the next coming years on this project. Many thanks to our consultants, to the law firm team, to Baker Tilly, to Alex Gerard, who is my chief of staff, who's unable to join us tonight, who worked lots more hours even than I have in conversations on bringing this deal forward. I want to thank the members of the TIFF Commission, who gave of their time away from their families and their businesses to participate in this process. This is really something for us to all be very excited about and proud of and energized by, and I think that that momentum is going to help when it comes to the downtown SED and keeping that ball moving forward to be bigger and better than we ever imagined. So, I'm an eternal optimist, and usually I'm right about those things. So, I'm very much encouraged by that, and congratulations to this board and to the mayor for your support on this TIFF project. We're just getting started, and I can't wait to see where this goes. The indoor sports facility conversations now can begin in earnest. We can start forming our campaign for fundraising to help bring in some private dollars to help support this effort. Bringing a 12-month stable economy to Branson is something that everybody in this room has been talking about for decades. This is our moment, so we're ready to go, and thank you guys so much for your support.
Before I pass it to the mayor, don't forget the Wings of Pride Air Show this weekend. It's going to be awesome. Mayor, do you have any closing remarks?
Yes, I do, Clay. Well, I sure ditto what Kathy just said. We have, what we passed tonight and the future of our city could not be any brighter. I will say my heart's broken over the discussions between the city and the downtown SED. I'm here to tell you, I know all of us, all of us just admire our historic downtown. We have so much support for our historic downtown. The downtown SED and the Board of Aldermen, I am confident are just in alignment. The discussions that took place tonight, and I'll say Glenn's involvement with that, just, it breaks my heart. A few people have said that they think within a week or just a meeting or two, all of this could be resolved. If we just all sat at the table, we all have the same desires, the exact same desires for our historic downtown, and I look forward to seeing that happen. Others than that, I surely wished I was present at City Hall. I wished I was there to enjoy the Blue Angels this weekend and the Navy Band Friday evening at the Branson Landing. My recovery's taking a little longer than most of us anticipated. However, I am getting better every day, and I'm working really, really hard to join you all again physically. I will say again that I am in constant communication with our Board of Aldermen, with Kathy and Alex, with our staff, in making a lot of these decisions, and I'm just, I, brighter days are in front of Branson, Missouri. So, Clay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn the Board of Aldermen meeting?
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.